The February 1st meeting of the City Council is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. You're gonna ask everybody, please take your seats, as beautiful as everybody looks, please do that. Thank you. These proceedings are being video-recorded, as well as presented live on KCLV Cable Channel 2, and are closed captioned for hearing-impaired viewers. Please note, Customers: A CenturyLink. You may view this program in high-definition on Channel 1002. Council meeting, as well as all of their KCLV programming, may be viewed on the Internet at www.kclv.tv/live. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV Channel 2 and the web the Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 PM, and also on Friday at 4:00 AM, Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 7:00 AM, and the following Monday at 5:00 PM. This building is protected by state-of-the-art fire-detection-and-suppression sprinkler systems. If alarms should activate during today's meeting, please evacuate using the exit at the back of the chambers out to the mezzanine. Proceed out the double doors to the terrace and down the back staircase. For anyone who has difficulty with stairs, and I saw a student with crutches... Please note that you may check with a marshal or fire official for assistance. Once outside, assemble on the northeast corner across the street from City Hall at Lewiston 1st. Employees wearing safety vests or city marshals will inform you when it's safe to re-enter the building. For public comment related to items on the agenda, citizen participation and public hearing items, we have available a speaker card which you may complete and submit to the city clerk. Cards are also available online in the clerk's office or at the rear of these chambers. If you did not submit a card, it does not prevent you from speaking under public comment, citizen participation, or specified public hearing items. If anyone is present today who has need for hearing-impaired equipment, please come see our city clerk staff up front. If you parked in the parking garage across the street, for those of you who parked across the street, please be sure to have your ticket validated by security officers when exiting outside this door. Before we proceed with the agenda, would everyone please rise for the invocation given by Reverend Bonnie Pauli, Christ Episcopal Church, remain standing for the pledge. Good morning.
Morning. Let us pray. Grant, O God, that your holy and life-giving Spirit may so move every human heart, and especially the hearts of the people of our country, that barriers which divide us may crumble, suspicions disappear, and hatred cease, that our divisions, being healed, we may live in justice and peace. Bless each one of these council members present here today. Bestow on them the Spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people. We ask this in your most holy name. Amen.
(Inaudible)
Okay. We are gonna proceed with our ceremonial portion of the agenda, and because we're gonna need the podium moved, I am going to announce that from up here. Our first item is going to be by our wonderful, who's writing down what to say, Councilman Anthony. So you may proceed with this, and we'll still come on down.
(Inaudible) Okay, good morning, everyone. Come on. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to... There you go, that's what I wanted to hear. Welcome to Las Vegas City Hall. Today gives me great pleasure to recognize the Sixth Annual Chinese New Year in the Desert Festival, and welcome all cultural ambassadors. So we're gonna have some fun this morning, so let the festivities begin. (Applause) Okay, good morning, everyone. Come on. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to... There you go, that's what I wanted to hear. Welcome to Las Vegas City Hall. Today gives me great pleasure to recognize the Sixth Annual Chinese New Year in the Desert Festival, and welcome all cultural ambassadors. So we're gonna have some fun this morning, so let the festivities begin. Mr. Ba, would you raise your hand? (Applause) Give them a nice round of applause. Okay. Not sure what I'm supposed to do here right now. All right, at this point, I'd like to call up to the podium Janie Lau, who is the golden catalyst and the executive producer, and has been instrumental in organizing this festival for the past six years. Janie, why don't you come on down here, give her a nice round of applause. The City of Las Vegas, golden catalyst, and the Las Vegas Convention and Visitors Authority come together to celebrate the Year of the Rooster in Las Vegas this past weekend, January 27th through the 29th. For the second year in a row, Chinese New Year in the Desert was held in multiple locations, including the Fashion Show Mall. We had a great parade in downtown Las Vegas on Fremont Street, which ended at Container Park, and at the Link Theater. Throughout the weekend, festival guests are taken on a journey around the world as they experience folklore, acrobatic, and traditional instrumental performances. The City of Las Vegas is very pleased to usher in the Year of the Rooster with an assortment of cultural amenities, attractions, and celebrations to make this the largest Chinese New Year celebration in the United States. How about that, huh, Las Vegas? And I'd like to turn over the microphone to Janie Lau, who can talk a little bit about the Chinese New Year.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to invite all my CNY ambassadors. Come down here, that includes Sifu, Stephen, please, come down here. And we have something to present to all of you. I know Mayor already has her nice scarf. You guys look so festive. I know. Were they envious? All right. Thank you, Mayor Goodman, for kicking off the Year of the Rooster with us last Friday. This year Lunar New Year is early, and we're so thankful to our major sponsors, LV-CVA, Palm Eastern, Container Park, and Fashion Show, for keeping us warm inside, indoors, because for the first time, it was actually indoors, right? So, thank you so much. And we also want to thank Councilman Sarros Anthony. You've been with us for six consecutive years. You braked out here at the Fremont Street, right Seth? We were out there for the first three years, then two years at the Link Theater, and then finally indoors. So we hope to continue the tradition another six more years. I know this is being recorded, and I wanted to thank Esther, back there. That lady, that woman, please stand up. Esther, you need to stand up and take a bow, because you know what? Thank you. This woman run the show for us. Thank you so much for donating the mobile stage, as well as the bleachers, because you gotta understand this, we Asians, especially the Chinese community, we don't do parade. We don't do stuff like that. So this is really nice, because we actually have quite a few groups and schools participating this year, so we're real excited about that. Now, events like this do not happen overnight. And right here, next to me, are my CNY ambassadors, and I just want to take a moment to recognize them, because you know what? They are always in the background running things around, doing things. Christina Brooks, my dear, Assistant Principal at Somerset Academy at Sky Point, love you. Yan Bing Chen, she's the President of the Asia Pacific Culture Society and Secretary of the Las Vegas Shanghai Nations Association. And this year, we sponsored 16 performers from Sichuan, China. And this young lady, she managed all of them for four days straight, and that's really tough, okay? And they didn't speak a lick of English. Thank you. Salvi Edelman, founder of the Rising American Pacific Americans Coalition for Diversity. That's a mouthful. Thank you so much. Pan Fan, President of the Vietnamese Mutual Association of Las Vegas. In addition to the Lunar New Year, Vietnam, as well as Korea, we celebrate the New Year at the same time, the Lunar New Year. And that leads me to Pearl Kim, representing our Korean community. Gamsanmida, thank you so much. Jason Lau, representing the Chinese Malaysian community. And last but not least, we have Ji Wong, our talented artist and executive producer of the Benefit Concert. So thank you so much, Ji. Out in the audience, I wanted to give a shout-out to Jake Phillips, right there, with two students, who are so lucky to get our class today. Great job. Thank you so much for participating. And I know I have Kim and Russo from the Art District, but if you were down there this past Saturday, downtown is all about arts and culture, and we were so honored to have the Gorilla Arts Foundation out there joining with us. So, Mayor Goodman, City Council members, and everyone here today, our greatest hope is that Chinese New Year in the Desert touches you and your loved ones, and our celebration marks the beginning of a happy, healthy, and prosperous 2017. Have a Happy New Year. May the Year of the Rooster bring you lots of fortune. Xin Nian Kuai Le. Xin Nian Da Jie. Xie Xie. That's it?
Good job. Oh, we're not done yet. And we do have a special recognition for Mr. Ji Wong, if you could come over here. He is the ambassador for this event, and is very instrumental in making sure this comes off with a hitch. So because of that, I would like to present you with a proclamation from the City of Las Vegas, signed by the mayor and the entire city council, proclaiming today Ji Wong Day in the City of Las Vegas.
Well, first of all, thank you so much, Mayor Goodman, and the members of the councilmen. I am humbled and honored to be received this recognition, and I also want to thank you, my sister Janie Lau, and everybody from the CNY, from the desert. Coming from the first generation of immigrants from Malaysia, this is truly an American dream that comes true. And I vow to continue to share my work and my talents with our community in the fields of performing arts, music education, as well as fitness. And again, thank you so much for this honor.
Okay, you can go ahead and sit down. Thank you very much. So, we've been doing this for... This is the sixth year, and normally we'd be done by now, but we found out something special was happening at the Meadow School, which is very dear to the mayor's heart. So I would like the head of the school, Jeremy Gregerson, would you please come down here? And before I give the mic to him, I would like all these kids to come down here, huh? I want the little kids in front, and then the bigger kids, and I want them all lined up down here, because we've got something special for everyone.
This is the 23rd year of celebration of the Chinese New Year.
23rd year?
23rd year. First year was at Fremont Street, then out to the Forum for 23 years. Every child that either did kindergarten or fifth grade, 23 years knows the songs they're gonna sing. 23 years of celebration.
We've got seniors right now who can still sing the songs.
And we have them in college and through college. The first children are now 28. At least five-year-olds. So this is kindergarten, 60 kindergartners and 65th graders. Because this lady here, we don't know her name, and started at Georgia, and this is the one who initiated celebrating this.
Well, Mr. Gregerson, while they're getting lined up, why don't you tell the audience what's gonna happen?
Sure. Again, my name is Jeremy Gregerson. I'm head of school at the Meadows, and it is my pleasure to introduce our students to you today, as we sort of get them lined up here for their performance. At the Meadows School, our tradition is to provide the very best college preparatory education available in the region, but part of our mission is also to teach students about the importance of global citizenship, which means we try to impress upon them the importance of knowledge and respect for other cultures. And so what you're about to see is a nod in that direction. This is a tradition that we started over 20 years ago. Kindergartners and 5th graders learn these songs and learn about the tradition of Chinese New Year. And part of this proud tradition is that the students perform a march and a parade, and perform a version of this performance at the Forum Shops every year, which we did this year on Monday. So, without further ado, I think we're almost ready to get started here. Just a few more 5th graders. All right, I will turn the time over to the kids.
Geng He Fat Choi, it is the time of the Chinese New Year. The Meadow School students wish you good fortune and happiness. The Year of 2017 is the Year of the Rooster.
She has eyebrows, she has eyes, but her eyes cannot blink. Claydoll, claydoll, one beautiful claydoll. She has nose, she has mouth, but her mouth cannot speak. She is fake, she is not real. She doesn't have dear mommy, she doesn't have dear daddy. Claydoll, claydoll, one beautiful claydoll. I'll be her mommy, I'll be her daddy, and I'll love her forever.
She has eyebrows, she has eyes, but her eyes cannot blink.
Claydoll, claydoll, one beautiful claydoll. She has nose, she has mouth, but her mouth cannot speak.
She is fake, she is not real. She doesn't have dear mommy, she doesn't have dear daddy.
Claydoll, claydoll, one beautiful claydoll. I'll be her mommy, I'll be her daddy, and I'll love her forever.
Finally, Gabe Warburton and Rocco Santo Pietro will tell you about Happy New Year, Best Wishes, and Congratulations.
Through every street and lane, from everybody's mouth...
The first words they say to each other are Happy New Year and Best Wishes.
Happy New Year to you, and Best Wishes for good health, luck, and long life.
And all the best to our Chinese and Chinese-American friends.
All the best for a Happy New Year. Congratulations.
(Music)
You all are just simply phenomenal. We have young people around this country now that are 28 years of age that can sing these songs, so it's been going on that long. When they were in kindergarten, it was five years old, so we've been doing it 23 years. We're so proud of you. You are so much a compliment to our community, celebrating this glorious Chinese New Year. Happy New Year, everyone, everyone. Thank you all. Okay, I think we're gonna have two lines go out. One line up this aisle, right there, and out that door, and with Mrs. Brennan, if my eyes aren't, I can't even quite see that far, and Mrs. Verban going out this way. And thank you all. Have a wonderful week. Thank you for coming down. We're just so proud of you. Take care. It's wonderful. Thank you. And parents, remember, just get your tickets, parking tickets validated out there. Okay, we'll give them a couple of minutes to go, and here, look what we have back. Wonderful. Okay. You are next. Have a good day. Happy New Year. So cute. Okay, for our next item, Councilman and our mayor pro tem Steve Ross is gonna do something very special.
That's hard to top, mayor and council members. Councilman Anthony, great job, and I will, I have to say that I did catch Councilman Anthony running through the hallway upstairs with that costume on the other day, and I didn't get any pictures, but I should have. That was awesome. Great job, you guys. We have amazingly talented people in our community, and the next person I'm gonna recognize is just that as well. But before I do, I'm gonna need my friend and principal of Centennial High School, Trent Dade, to join me up here at the podium. Give him a round of applause. Trent and I have worked together for a long time. Sir, thanks for joining us today. Thanks for helping me do this. Karen Wheatz is our Citizen of the Month, and every month, each of us gets to recognize a Citizen of the Month, and I'm gonna introduce Karen Wheatz. Karen, would you come on up here, please, and I'll tell you why, and I'm gonna give her a round of applause, because you're gonna really understand why. This humble, "I don't want to be here, why are you doing this to me," coach, come up here, don't be shy, you can stand right up here. A structured, strict disciplinarian with a heart of gold, Karen Wheatz has created a winning program through high expectations, clear, consistent rules for her players, and a genuine concern for her players, that her players achieve both on and off the court. She's the girls' women's basketball coach at Centennial High School. Karen built the Centennial Women's Basketball Program from the ground up when the school opened its doors in 1999. Centennial won its first state championship in 2002. That was the first time a Southern Nevada school had won in over 20 years. From 2002... Are you nervous? You're in front of people all the time.
I know, but not right now.
You want us to yell at you? From 2002 to 2005, they were the consecutive state champions. Let me read some numbers off to you. Fifteen division titles for Centennial, 12 regional titles, eight state titles, and out of 677 games, you won 600 of those games with those girls at Centennial High School. Can you believe that? Off-the-charts numbers. And she's so shy. Most important to Karen are the students who have received college scholarships. Over 35 women have earned scholarships with her help, and I think that's probably the most important part of this. Basketball's great, but getting these girls to get those scholarships and head onto school is even better. When she learned that some of her players might not be able to get their championship rings because the families couldn't afford it, she actually put on a fundraiser to help raise money, so every one of those girls got their championship rings. Karen also serves as the president of Las Vegas Bulldogs, a nonprofit that assists young ladies with improving their basketball skills through the spring and summer. And while I've got Mr. Dade here, Mr. Dade, I'm gonna hand this to you, so you can brag about her as well.
I've known Coach Whitez for 11 years as the principal at Centennial High School. I knew of her before I came to Centennial High School. I saw her record, I saw her on the court as a coach, and her record, et cetera, et cetera. But I've gotten to know her as a person, and when I saw that she was gonna get Citizen of the Month, nothing could have been more exciting to me than to have her name as Citizen of the Month. I just have two brief things, really, to speak to you about how she talks about developing young ladies into great citizens, and not just great basketball players. And we talk about wins, we talk about scholarships, et cetera, et cetera. But she currently has her basketball players in etiquette school, so they go to etiquette school, so they know how to address themselves when they're in a public forum, they know how to shake hands, if they're at dinner, how to eat appropriately, some job skills, so they're able to get jobs when they leave high school, as our mission is to prepare students for success beyond graduation. Hers is to prepare kids for life altogether. So she not only wins on the court, she's developing better citizens. On top of that, she's always encouraged all of her kids to be in honors and AP classes. It would be easy to keep them eligible and keep them in the lower-level classes. She pushes them to the higher-level classes. I had to walk out of the gym years ago, a couple students had forgotten their homework, and I thought this was better to have deniability-plausibility, so I walked out of the room, because there was consequences for not having the homework. Consequently, her kids are best citizens on campus as well. One last thing is, and this really shows how great of a person she is, we had a child last year that was not able to graduate because of a proficiency exam, but had all of her credits, et cetera, et cetera. She helped relocate the family, make some phone calls to another state. The child ended up graduating from high school in another state, and consequently is now in a post-secondary education program. That's well above... state and consequently is now in a post-secondary education program. That's well above and beyond. And so that's why I'm so grateful that Coach White is able to get Citizen of the Month for the city of Las Vegas and I would say the state of Nevada as well. Thank you.
Awesome. Give her a round of applause. Thank you, Mr. Day. But there's more. Coach White, not only are you Citizen of the Month, but we are also, the mayor and the Las Vegas City Council are proclaiming today Karen White's Day in the city of Las Vegas as well. So. If you'd hold that, actually, give us a few words, because I know you're so shy. But talk about your program and the girls and are you gonna cry?
I didn't know the last story was gonna come up. Thanks, Mr. Day. I do have a few things to say, actually. First of all, thank you, Councilman Ross, and everyone that helps him in making something like this possible. Mayor Goodman, you know, Lois, you know, I've known you for a lot of years. I always say, I was at UNLV going to school when Jerry won the national title. And I still talk about it to this day because it was like one of the best days of my life back in college. Sorry about my voice. But to me, it's not about me because obviously, we know that I can't do this by myself. But I have some great people that surround me that aren't here today. My assistant coach Cassandra Adams has been with me for over 20 some years. And she is like my rock. I mean, she's one of those people that wouldn't come to something like this because it's not about that to her either. But you know, when you have that loyalty and you have that stability and you coach with someone for that long, and we've been together for that long, it just makes, you know, for a much better system and a much better program that we have. Coach Katie Lutman has been with me for over 11 years. She does a great job with our younger program, also helping out with our older girls. I mean, she's amazing. Carmen Ranch does a lot to help us out with the kids off the court and also with assisting me during games. Gary Arlitz has been with the program for a long time. I mean, I could go on and on about people that have been helping us, the people that help us in the spring and the summer and the fall time with our nonprofit Vegas Bulldogs. Thanks to all of them. I mean, they're amazing people. Our parents, you know, we have supportive parents. Sometimes we have some not-so-supportive parents, but you know, I thank them. They're a part of this. I share that with them too. But you know, administration has been huge. I've had nothing but supportive administration while I've been at Centennial High School. Carol Levitt hired me back in 1999. Mr. Day has been there, you know, through a lot of my career. And they're just, they're amazing people to work for. So that makes it easy as well. But most importantly, my kids. I wouldn't be here without those kids. I mean, they put in a lot of time. And I love each and every one of them. I mean, they're great people. But these wins wouldn't be there. And like Mr. Day says, it's not even about the wins. It's about them being better people when they go out in the community because that's what it's all about. Sorry about my voice because it's season time right now. So we do lots of coaching. But once again, I thank everybody because this is amazing. Like, I would have never thought anything like this. So thanks.
Give her another round of applause. Coach, this is your plaque for being Citizen of the Month. And we have a sign that's going to be on Main Street for the entire month with your name on it. So have your team drive back and forth, take pictures, put it on social media, the whole nine yards. And we sure appreciate everything that you do for the young ladies and young women in our community. Councilwoman?
She's shy here, but she certainly isn't shy coaching those games. I just have to say that. My husband was able to see her coach game. She brought a little sadness to us because my daughter, granddaughter Danielle, was on Gorman's team. They beat us for the championship, beat Gorman that year. But you know, the thing was, we respected her so much. My husband said she's one of the finest basketball coaches, not women's, finest basketball coaches in the country when he was alive. So I wanted to share that with you. And I took the loss pretty good because I respected you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. You are very much appreciated in this community, Coach, and you know that. And I know Mr. Day just loves the heck out of you for all you do for the students there at Centennial. Let's go get a picture over there by the sign if we can, please? Thank you, Mr. Day. Thanks, Coach. Appreciate you coming down.
Okay, wonderful. We are so lucky. I mean, you know, for young ladies today to go ahead and learn how to have a conversation and have some manners and how to use a fork and knife is just as important to get and to shake hands rather than with the dead fish. Very important. Thank you. Wonderful. Okay, for our next item, it's my pleasure to announce the winners of this year's Urban Design Awards in the city of Las Vegas. This is actually the 10th year that the city has presented these awards. The program encourages and promotes highest-quality urban design principles and recognizes companies and individuals who have contributed to these goals. To qualify for the awards, projects must be located in the city limits, achieve significant impact through enhancing public spaces, promoting pedestrian safety, conserving resources, and preserving historic buildings and places. Nominations are open during the fall of each year in the following categories. One, building and environment. Two, public places. Three, public art. And four, historic preservation and adaptive reuse. This year, we had some amazing nominees in all four categories. And it just shows how we're continuing to build a world-class city. Our first category today is building and environment. And some of the nominees included the Eclipse Theater by KME Architects, the East 197 California Lofts by Almany Architecture, and the Lucky Dragon Hotel and Casino by Ed Vance and Associate Architects. The winner in the category this year is Cornish Pasty Company, located at 10 East Charleston Boulevard, designed by Cameron Fallad. And so, Mr. Fallad, please come, join us at the podium with your team. And I'm going to ask Mayor Pro Tem to present the awards while I tell you wonderful things about this project. The interaction that this building has with both the street and its surrounding neighborhood, the successful renovation of an existing structure, the vibrancy this building added to the arts district, and the overall aesthetics of this structure led to its win. Mr. Fallad's work in revitalizing this building on Charleston has been remarkable, bringing with him over 30 years of redevelopment experience spanning across downtowns of numerous cities. He came into the arts district years ago with a vision for where he wanted to see the area move and has continued to act upon that vision. So now I want you all to join us for a quick photo. So we're gonna have a photo right here, I guess. Where are you, Shane? There you are. So if you can come in, and that's your award, but we're gonna hear from you. Congratulations. And maybe a few words.
Sure. I'd like to thank Mayor Goodman, Councilman Bob Coffin, City of Las Vegas Building and Safety, Fire Department, and Planning. I'm honored and thank you all.
May there be many more to come. Thank you, Mr. Fallad, and your team. We appreciate it. Thank you. Our next category is historic preservation and adaptive reuse. This year, we had one significant structure in the city that went above and beyond in this category, the Historic West Side School. The school, as you know, is located at 330 West Washington. And the work on the project was done by KME Architects. Please join us at the podium, anyone from KME that's with us today. The Historic West Side School is currently the oldest remaining school in Las Vegas and is listed in the National Registry of Historical Places, the Nevada State Register of Historic Places, and the City of Las Vegas Historic Property Register. Although socially significant to many groups, the Historic West Side School is especially significant to our local African-American community as it was the first racially-integrated school on the west side. It is the home to KSEP Radio and the nucleus of the west side community. The design consists of rehabilitating the existing 19, and I'm not sure of this date because Mr. Stoldahl said it was wrong, 1923 or 1920, 1923, West Side School 1923, and the 1948 annex back to the existing floor plans. The central courtyard and plaza serve as gathering places for the concerts, multi-use functions such as open areas for retail displays, pop-up vendors, and farmers' markets. KME, along with Chateau Inc., a historic architectural consultant, did extensive research to locate old photos to determine the original light fixtures, the building colors, the doors and the window types, which were replicated to match the original. Some of the added features include car charging stations, bike racks, natural gas-powered air conditioning, and artistic concrete seating and tables. Sustainable design was incorporated into the renovation, with the project expected to receive Silver LEED certification. Congratulations to you all. And perhaps you would want to say a little bit and tell us about your team.
Good morning, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Mel Green, Prince of KME Architects. This project was actually a labor of love. What I mean by when you go into the attic and you see two feet of pigeon poop, you know it was a labor of love. So our team is a very diverse team. We're comprised of a lot of interesting and young and beautiful architects, intern architects. And one of the things that we stress here is that we want to make sure that we're training for our future. And our team are a very professional team. We put this project together to come up with something that would be adaptive reuse, and that worked out very, very well.
Can you introduce everyone?
Sure. I have a big team here. Ben is one of the interns architects here. And we have Lage Design, Oric, Project Trivia, Brianna, she's a young and upcoming architect, Tracy, my wife, which is, and Carlos for PID Design, MPNE.
So we're gonna have a picture if everybody will come in close. Councilwoman, you're small. Can you step right in here and look at Shane in the back in the pink, please? Now, as I understand, and Councilman Barlow couldn't be here today, but there's still space to lease for those. I understand too that perhaps you have the Historic Preservation Group in Heidi Swank has rented facilities. And so if you want to have a wedding there or a birthday party as well, anything, it's a beautiful, and we're so proud of you, Mr. Green. You've done so much in our community and team and interns. Wonderful. And wife, God bless you. We know what that's like. Congratulations. Thank you. Our next category is public places. And this year, downtown Las Vegas saw the creation of one special and significant public place in the heart of our civic and business district, the new Supreme Court of Nevada Court of Appeals building. Located, oops, they forgot their award. Thank you very much. Located at 408 East Clark Avenue, this building was designed by LV Land Company LLC, part of the EHB Company's development brand. So please, Mr. Loie and team, please come on up and join us here. This is so incredible. If you have not seen it or driven by, not to say anything less of other awards, but this is simply a remarkable facility. The two-story, 26,000-square-foot building includes chambers and offices, both for the Supreme Court in Nevada and the Nevada Court of Appeals, as well as a 72-seat grand courtroom for oral arguments and public hearings. LEED certified at the gold level, this building will conserve energy, reduce water consumption, and improve indoor air quality, all the while reducing overall operating expenses. The neoclassical design enhances the public space of downtown Las Vegas, bringing order, balance, and harmony to the corner of Fourth Street and Clark Avenue. The civic purpose of the building reinforces the culture of democracy, while the architectural form speaks of the role of the building's function. The intricate design details and dramatic use of columns, symmetry, and geometric forms help define a building that is a historical icon in this market and in the making. It is to perfection. The Supreme Court in Nevada and the Nevada Court of Appeals building will help define not only our skyline, but the rich culture and history of Las Vegas for generations to come. I know I have to ask you to say some words. You absolutely, all of you here that are here, delivered a building. I know there's no faux FAUX faults, for those of you who don't know that. Everything is real and comes in from around the world. Marble, everything that's used. So I would love you to say something about the building and tell us a little bit. Somebody. Frank Pancras.
Mayor, council persons, back about 12 years ago, then Mayor Goodman, as part of the approval of One Queensbridge Place in Tivoli Village, looked at Johann and team and said, Johann, we love what you do. And we know you're gonna do a great job. When are you gonna do something downtown? And Johann said, someday I will. And so we, as a team, are certainly honored to be able to fulfill on that commitment. And the building is certainly a marquee and will be for many generations and decades and generations to come. And it was a great opportunity. We worked very closely with the city and the city staff and Bill Aronson team at the RDA to make this a possibility. And other team members, Michael Ware from Altrex and team are here today. They work very closely with Johann and team in drawings and design and all the construction folks that have participated and helped. This is theirs as well. So thank you very much.
We are just so proud. I hope there will be something on our website, Mr. Wriggleman, that can really walk the public through the building to talk about the kind of marble, the design, the intricate carving of all the seals that are in there that I've had the pleasure of learning a small bit about. But I think if we could have that so we can put it up on our website so everybody will know the high, high, high quality of this phenomenal building. So congratulations to you behalf of everyone in the city and in the state and in the country. Thank you very much for this outstanding, magnificent building. Thank you, Frank.
Hi, my name is Vicki. And I do not do public speaking, but I just wanted to say to Coach White, we were so moved by your story. And my partner and I would like you to come by our office so that we can give a check to your foundation.
Talk about being part of the community. Awesome. See, now finally.
I actually want to recognize Michael Ware and his team and a few individuals that really wanted to learn how to build stone buildings. Nobody in architecture school anymore teaches it. And we can't find architects or designers. So we have to design our own projects with their significant weights. But I had But I had, I was wondering, why are we getting an award before a building is finished and the last stone would be placed? I know people are wondering if the whole thing is gonna collapse right before the end. There you go. Okay. But thank you for the opportunity, and thank you for the support we got over the years and allowing us to deliver this building. And without a great team, we would never be able to do this. Frank and everybody in our office worked very hard to build a monument for the city of Las Vegas. It was an opportunity for us, maybe once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, to build something with white marble, with the only building in the state of Nevada, and hopefully it will serve the office that is gonna be occupied soon very well for generations to come. Thank you very much.
Congratulations. So, please take, this time, do even, keep it hidden though until we're in the building. Okay? Thank you, thanks Frank. Thank you. Congratulations. So unbelievable. And please do give David Wriggleman the particulars on the building so we can put it up with a reference there. Thank you. Oh, I'm so sorry. Come back. Picture, picture. Vicki, please come back. Johann, come back. Frank, come back. Up in the corner? Everywhere. Okay. Councilman Coffin and Frank, please come for the photo. So, back there, Shane in pink. Great, thank you. Thank you. When are we moving in? When is it?
In three weeks.
Three weeks?
Three weeks. We'll be moving in, grand opening is March 27.
March 27 is the grand opening. So, you better believe it will be there. Okay, thank you all. And our final category is public art. And this was a really tough category because there is so much going on that we have two winners in this category. First, some of the great nominees that included Entertain: In the Windows on First by Cat Phillips, The Pinata Motel constructed for Life is Beautiful Festival by Justin Fevela, and Rhythm &amp; Hughes at Charleston Heights Art Center by Denise Duarte. Our first winner in this category is the Huntred Center Pylon Sign located at 1116 East Charleston Boulevard. The sign was designed by Stephen Chortel and built by YESCO for the Dapper Companies. Please join us at the podium. Jay Dapper of Dapper Companies contacted YESCO with the goal of obtaining a sign for his high-profile urban redevelopment in the historic Huntred District of Las Vegas. As a property owner, he was adamant that the sign evoked the character of signage present at the time of the neighborhood's heyday. In collaboration with Mr. Dapper, YESCO's design team determined the Googie, is that right? Googie? Googie style of graphics and architecture that would best suit the nature of the development. Many signature Las Vegas signs owe their look to the influences of this style, including the famous Welcome to Fabulous Las Vegas sign. Stephen Chortel delivered a creative suite of design options and color combinations that were inspired by the playful architectural style that distinguishes it nearly, and distinguishes nearly every coffee shop and bowling alley that was built during 1940 and 1966. The approach guaranteed that Mr. Dapper's vision of modern yet decidedly retro pylon would be iconic. The Huntred Center Pylon serves as an iconic landmark, signifying the active restoration of the Huntred neighborhood's rich and influential history. So, let's get in first for a close picture so I don't forget it this time. Come on in here again. Okay? No, stay right here, please. And look at Shane in the back. And we offer congratulations, and who would like the microphone first?
My name is Mark Otis. I'm the creative director at YESCO. It is such a pleasure to work with Stephen. What would have made an interesting presentation is the many options for this sign. On the way to the final selection, each one of them was even more creative than the last. And it's also a great honor to represent YESCO. We're in our 97th year, so we're coming up in 2020 on our 100th anniversary. And so, it's always great when we get an opportunity to do a legacy sign like this that features neon in all its glory.
This is one of the easier projects I've had to work on, one of the most interesting too. It was a very easy process working with Jay. And the sign actually grew from, was it 30 or 40 feet up to 60? Yeah. So, it's a, you can see it from the freeway, and it's a start to revitalizing a historic part of Las Vegas. So, thank you, Mayor Goodman and council movers.
Did you want to say add to?
I'll be fast. I just wanted to say first, thanks for, you know, the mayor and the whole city council, and specifically, you know, Councilman Coffin has been awesome to work with. This is his ward, and when we came to him with this crazy idea to build this old vintage sign, you know, he loved it and supported it all the way through the whole process. So, thank you very much. YESCO team was amazing. You know, I came to them with the idea of building the sign, and it was, it was a fun process. It was probably one of the most fun I've ever had, you know, putting a sign project together. And like these gentlemen said, it's the start of a lot of amazing things in the Huntred neighborhood. So, we really appreciate the city's support and seeing our vision, and we look forward to a lot more exciting things happening in the Huntred neighborhood.
Now, you have the leadership right there, and we're just so proud of this. When you fly in to be able to know where you live, because you can look out of the plane and see this is the Huntred neighborhood and it's yours. So, we thank you. Did you want to add something, Coffin, Mr. Councilman? Did you want to? No? Okay. Thank you. Congratulations. Don't forget your award. We're so proud. And YESCO, that's amazing. Forever it's been here in Las Vegas, and we do thank you. So proud. Beautiful. No, we'll wait for the next, more. And our second winner in this category is a very distinct piece of art that serves as the gateway to one of our most iconic buildings, the Historic West Side School. The Historic West Side School Gates located at 330 West Washington by Zach Ostrowski is the second winner for public art. Zach designed and fabricated a pair of custom steel art gates for the restoration of the Historic West Side School, based on a historic photo and drawing inspiration from the stories and legacy of the great building. These gates serve as an entryway to the site, the building location, and legacy of Las Vegas, and the history of our great valley. While the rest of the building is subject to entry based on hours of availability, the gates reflect our commitment to honoring the past and are always available for the public to view, enjoy, photograph, and take a piece of our city home with them, whether opened or closed. So, coming back down, coming down. Zach, congratulations. Awesome. Beautiful. We're so proud. And here's, okay, so how about a picture, and then we'll ask you to say something. Okay? We're gonna have a picture. If you'll look at Shane, if everybody can come in close. No, sorry. Okay, tell us a little bit about the gates and your idea.
Cool. Thank you, Mayor, Council. The gates are, it was a great concept to work with KME and everyone else, and the conceptual idea of the gate was referencing the old historic window molding frames to create the patterning, and then the historical image was used as an inverse. So, the idea of like looking into the past. So, the actual pattern is cut out of steel, so created digitally, and it's actually the photo from the original principal, and it reflects the inverse, the ghost image on the ground. So, it changes in the time of the day, so it's using native desert materials. And so, it's one of those things, it's a very subtle thing that you wouldn't fully experience, but it's a photo realistic image on the floor, and then it's pixelated on the actual image, on the seal. So, it's kind of a nice contrast, and we tried to be very subtle about it.
You sure did a beautiful job.
Thank you.
So proud. Talk about talent. Awesome. Congratulations. Can't wait for your next. Anyway, thank you all, and we're just really excited. And so, for our final item today, I'd like to ask our chief financial officer, Mark Vincent, to come up here. And our city manager, Betsy Fratwell. Where is our city manager? It's an exciting day. He is a work of art in himself. Mark Vincent is that. So, let me historically, let me talk about Mark Vincent here a little bit. After 19 years with the city, our fabulous CFO, Mark Vincent, is finally retiring. Mark has been such a steady influence and a steady hand at the city, and he's been amazing at keeping everything moving forward, staying in a budget, especially during the Great Recession. He's truly been an inspiration to all of us on the council and as mayor, and of great service to the entire community, because he's ensured that the city was always making financially smart moves and avoiding the pitfalls that happen to so many cities in financial decision-making. As you may not know, Mark grew up in Las Vegas and is a graduate of Bishop Gorman High School, Go Gales, and UNLV. He has a great family, and I know he relishes the idea of getting to spend more time with them, as well as more time pursuing his passion of fly fishing. I know that your lovely wife Denise, who's here, of course, and I'd like to ask her to join us at the podium too. Come on, Denise. There are a lot of great stories about Mark because he has a great sense of humor and is always quick on his feet. One story that comes to mind is when Oscar was still mayor, and Mark was giving a presentation about financing park renovations to the city council. In the midst of the long presentation, Mark chimed in to say, "Mayor, you might find this interesting to know that Baker Park is where I first kissed my wife." It was on Valentine's Day when Mark and Denise were in sixth grade together. Boy, is that Vegas, or is that Vegas?
It's 1968.
It's in true Oscar fashion, he replied, "What do you want? You want me to build a monument there or something?" That's so typical. How annoying. No, it's a great, beautiful story. That is the most annoying thing I've ever heard. I'm not gonna cook dinner tonight. So, there. There was laughter, but Mark won the day when he calmly replied, "I think I can find the money for it." Did you find the money, and did we do the kiss?
We did do the kiss, but we didn't build a monument there.
No, 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 but I think in San Diego on the midway, right in front of the midway, there's the nurse and the sailor. Look at that kiss. So, we could replicate it with Denise and Mark. I think it's a great idea. As your last act, let's put some money into that. Now, we have two arts, pieces of art in your neighborhood. I think it's wonderful. Okay, but Mark.
The girls were kissable, though, there's no question. All the sisters were.
I hope you weren't moving in on Denise. God. Okay, Mark. It's about Mark. This isn't about kissing, although kissing is good. Mark, thank you for all of your work at the city, and we'll miss you greatly, but we wish you the best in your retirement. And I want to present you with a proclamation that makes February 1, 2017, Mark Vincent Day in our city. And I know, before we give you the microphone, you might want to give it to Denise. Get the real stuff on you. Well, both. She gets half. You know, it was a heck of a kiss, obviously. Betsy, please, our wonderful city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I mentioned some of this yesterday because we had a bit of a send-off for Mark with a bunch of employees and a bunch of people that we've worked with for a long time. The mayor's right. Mark has been an incredible and amazing leader for our city, and he's been an integral part of our team as we've kind of gone through some incredible growth and also seen some incredible dips through the recession, and now building back, obviously, into a position of great strength. He really did help guide us through that economic recession that was really challenging for our entire community, and I relied greatly on him during that process, and I really appreciate all he did. Mark is known for his tenacity, his creativity, and his conservatism, and a lot of times you don't hear those three words strung together, which I think tells you just how unique he is. You know, Mark's not an accountant's accountant. He is a finance guy, and he sees the big picture, and it really has helped position us as a city in a way that I think we can all be very proud of. I wanted to just kind of put in perspective what Mark has seen happen at our city from financial terms. When he joined the city, our budget was $483 million. Now, it's $1.3 billion. So, pretty significant jump, almost three times. Not quite three times, but darn close. It's his fault. When Mark started with us, our bond rating was an A1 or an A+. And now, we are rated AA2 and AA. So, huge improvements, which saves us a lot of money on anything that we finance. Our number of employees grew. We had a dip in the middle, and we haven't quite recovered, but when he started, we had 2,800-plus employees, and now we have close to 3,400 employees, just to put it in perspective. One thing that Vanetta mentioned to me that I thought was pretty important is your cash position tells how strong you really are. So, when we started, when Mark started here, we had $342 million in our cash position, and now we're up to $525 million. So, substantial strength in that regard. We have had another 200,000 people added to our city during the period of time that Mark's been here. We've doubled the number of fire stations that we have, including adding a fire safety initiative that helped us fund quite a bit of that. Our fire and medical responses have doubled in that period of time. And we've added at least as many parks, probably another 700 acres of parks during this period of time. Mark, single-handedly led us through that from a financial standpoint with a great team of people, and took on some additional responsibilities, helping us open the door for technology and technological solutions. When he started here, I think our IT department could fit in a closet. Now, we have a whole floor for them, and Mark was very involved in that entire transition, and he's just been a great help. Mark also has incredible balance. Everybody knows that Mark is an awesome fly fisherman. This student aside, who broke the tip off my rod when I was trying to learn from Mark in the park one day, but we, he's a great fisherman, even if I'm a bad student. So, we love the fact that he's really balanced that way. He's incredibly involved in his church and his community, and I think that that helped ground all of us, frankly. So, thank you, Mark, for bringing that to our team. We have a little special presentation for you, Mark, that our operations and maintenance team put together for you. It's something brand new, so here we go. How about that? You know, we have, we have an incredibly talented team of welders and design artists, and so this is something new specifically for Mark that we thought you might enjoy, Mark. You're gonna have to build a whole new room at your house to handle all the Las Vegas paraphernalia you've received in the last couple of days.
On your front door.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you for everything. We're gonna miss you so much, and you've just made an incredible mark here at the city, and we look forward to seeing what you do next, and I hope you have a lot of fun doing it. And so, it's all yours now.
Thanks, Betsy, so much.
And the multicolor. Is that fabulous, really? Front door. It's front door.
Oh, my. This all started yesterday, and I don't want to repeat too much of what I said yesterday, but I need to tell you that tomorrow, my wife and I celebrate our 37th wedding anniversary. So, amen to that. And if it wasn't for Denise, for lots of reasons, I wouldn't be here today. And if it wasn't for Denise, for lots of reasons, I wouldn't be here today in many ways. So she's always been my rock. She's always supported whatever crazy thing I was doing and when times were tough and things were kind of crazy, she knew, she understood that I needed to be here and work at different odd times and that's just the way it was. So, you know, if it wasn't for our family and my three sons are here, my grandson's here and my two daughter-in-laws and I'm missing a couple of other kids, family's so important. I grew up in this community. This is my community and so it means a lot to me. And Betsy said something last week at her values conference that just, I've heard her say it before, but I've been thinking about it all week, that these public service jobs that we do, these jobs that we're being paid to be good stewards of the money that our residents pay to provide services back to them, they're a gift. They're just, they're just the best job you can have. I've been in the private sector for a long time, almost longer than I've been here at the city. And it's just a special feeling to be able to do that. The reality is, if it wasn't for this board, if it wasn't for this city manager, Betsy Fratwell, who I think is the best in the country, if it wasn't for Scott and Orlando and Ted and Jorge and David Riegelman, that executive team that I've been together, many of them for my whole career. It's a great team and it's because of our relationship and it's because of the relationship with this executive team over here, because of the employees, the relationship with the community, it's been so fulfilling. It's not about the work. It's not about me. It's about the team. It's about the community and it's just been a blessing. And just let me, I promise I won't do, I know it's been a long morning, but I won't be as long as Councilman Coffin.
Thank you.
But I, but I. But I have to tell you how I got here because yesterday, I mean, it's nice to get the accolades, but really it's not, as you said, it's not about us. So how I got here? After I left public accounting and went to work for Nevada Test Site, Councilman Beers knows this story. And it was a great swap. Loved to get the hours back to normal and it was, again, another kind of a public service kind of a job, but the testing moratorium hit and year after year for five, six, seven years, decrement budgets. We were cutting budgets, 3%, 2%, 5%. It was bloody miserable. We were laying people off. We were cutting back services. We were cutting back programs. And it was a tough go and things finally leveled out and towards the end, Bechtel Nevada took over the contract and Bechtel Nevada and I just had a little bit of issue and I knew I needed to go on to do something else and Denise and I were praying for God to open up a window for me somewhere to get me out of this job that I was in that was not pleasant. I knew this much about government. I knew this much about public finance. If I was to apply today, they would have never hired me. That's how amazing it really was. And luckily, I had a friend who said, "Hey, would you be interested in the Finance Director of the City of Las Vegas?" And without thinking about it, I said, "Yes, get me out of here," you know? And it took me a few months, finally got here and I thought I'd died and gone to heaven. We were having 5%, 6% growth rates and in the mid-2000s, it was double-digit. It was like Nirvana and then the Great Recession hit. That's when I knew that at E.G.N.G., God was preparing me for something. He had prepared me, that experience at the test site, prepared me for what happened here in the Great Recession. And I knew then that it was all about His plan for me and my life. And so I just wanted to leave one thing with you. Obviously, I'm a Christian, but I think it's Jeremiah 29. God says, "I have plans for you. Plans to prosper you and not harm you. Plans to give you hope and a future." And I know there's some here in the council today that are having a little desert in their lives. Things personally sometimes are tough on us. The economy isn't necessarily the greatest. I know some of my peers are wondering, you know, "What are we going to do when Mark's gone?" God has a plan for everybody in here. Just have faith in it and carry out what you're here to do and everything's going to be fine. So thank you so much. God bless everybody.
Nothing more to say. We just wish you well.
Last hugs, last hugs. I don't get to hug everybody.
Never not laugh. Have a war and peace.
Last for today. Last for today. I remember delivering my speech.
That is a beautiful, beautiful piece of artwork.
I know, I saw that.
That's called a helmet, not a hat. Okay, we will now prepare and take another five minutes. I think that was the last, but a good way to finish. No one could have said it better than Mark Vincent. Nobody could have done it better than Mark Vincent. God bless you. May the lives of you and your family just be forever blessed and perfect because you sure have made a difference here. We love you all. This is home, remember that. So come back. All right, we need another five minutes for technology and then we'll go right into our city council meeting.
I don't think I'm authorized to help you with that problem.
I think I lost somebody. Did I lose? I just saw Councilman Beers. Are we on agenda item nine?
We are in nine.
Okay. Sorry, folks. They were all just here, but slipped away.
Some of us are a slipper than others.
We are a little more slippery, yes? Okay, I'll read slowly. Public comment. Any luck?
There we go.
Okay. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. The amount of time any single speaker is allowed may be limited. All comments made will be cross-reference to those specific items. If anyone submitted a speaker's card or whose wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda, please come to the podium, state your name for the record. This is your opportunity to address the council, but please be advised, the council's not able to respond or engage in dialogue. We'll set the time at one minute. Please, well, hello.
Hello, Mayor.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is?
Your name is Carolyn Goodman. We all know you. You are the most well-known person in the entire valley. My name, however, is David Figler. I live at 1302 South Sixth Street.
Brilliant, David Figler.
Thank you, Your Honor. I appear here as the president of the historic John S. Park Neighborhood and I'd like to speak to item 38 on the agenda. Unfortunately, I'm not going to be able to stay for the entirety of the agenda, so I'd like to just address the council briefly on that item. It is a proposed text amendment which impacts the downtown area, which is just north of both historic John S. Park Neighborhood and adjoining neighborhoods, Hunt Ridge, South Ridge, et cetera. The concern amongst some of the neighbors has been conveyed to me is that we all, myself included, participated in lengthy, robust downtown planning meetings over months at the Fifth Street Schoolhouse and other locations, giving our input on the future and the ultimate development of the downtown plan adopted by the council. Downtown nightclubs between this area of Charleston and Fremont Street.
Excuse me, you want to turn that off? It's all right. I would let Mr. Figler continue.
I appreciate that, Your Honor.
No, because I know you have a busy schedule going forward. Go ahead.
And I appreciate that. So the area between Charleston and Fremont Street was not really discussed as being a potential nightclub zone and this text amendment would allow that to come in. The neighbors were concerned that in light of the fact that we had so much robust conversation about all the things that would be good, all the about all the things that would be good, all the impacts that would happen in this area, that this not being part of it is something that they want to have some discussion on before it actually becomes part of the law through a text amendment, that there would be a discussion of secondary impact. I don't come here for or against the amendment, only that the neighbors have showed a concern that despite there being almost a year of discussion about what that plan to look like to make a tweak to the code that didn't discuss any of that, makes a feeling that the neighbors are a little left out of the discussion with something that could very well impact us, and I appreciate that consideration.
Okay, and I think Mr. Perrogo is here, so he's heard this as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak under this portion of the agenda? Okay, let's move on to Agenda Item 10. Business item for possible action. Any items this council staff and/or applicant wish to be stricken table, withdrawn, held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Your Honor. Councilman Anthony has requested that Agenda Item 31, R-7-2017, for possible action to approve a resolution adopting the Rainbow Boulevard North Corridor Plan in wards 4 and 6 be obeyed to the February 15 meeting. Staff has requested that Agenda Item 34, Second Amendment to Lease an Operating Agreement between the city and the Smith Center for the Performing Arts be stricken from the agenda. Staff has also requested to strike Agenda Item 37, Report by Information Technologies and Public Works staff regarding the outcome of the Smart Cities Hackathon held during the 2017 Consumer Electronics Show affecting all wards. The applicant has asked to withdraw without prejudice Agenda Items 40 and 41. 40 is SUP 67136. Abeyance items, Special Use Permit, Applicant Averyo Properties Incorporated, owner 824 South Decatur LLC and 824 South Decatur Boulevard. Agenda Item 41 is SDR 67137. Abeyance items, Site Development Plan Review related to SUP 67136. Applicant Averyo Properties Incorporated, owner 824 South Decatur LLC on 1.9 acres at 824 South Decatur Boulevard. That's my motion.
Thank you. There's a motion. Councilman Beers, it didn't go through. There we go. Thank you. Those motions pass. Agenda Item Number 11, Possible Action to Approve the Final Minutes by Reference to the December 21, 2016 Regular City Council Meeting.
I would move to approve those minutes.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve. Agenda Item 11, please vote. And please post. And that carries. Okay. Agenda Items, we are on to the consent agenda. Agenda Item 12 through 33, without the 31. Agenda Item 31, which has been obeyed to the 15th of February. On the consent agenda are considered to be routine or recommended for approval by the departments may be enacted in one motion, 12 through 33, with the exception of 31. Note that the record should reflect my abstention on Items 17 and 18. They pertain to medical marijuana-related businesses, and one of my sons is involved in that industry. I will be voting on all other items. Are there any other items council member wishes to bring forward? Okay, there's.
Saying none, Your Honor. Then I would move to approve the consent Agenda Items 12 through 33 minus Agenda Item 31.
Thank you very much. There's a motion. Please vote and please post. And agenda that carries, Agenda Item 34 has been stricken, so we're on to Agenda Item Discussion for Possible Action Regarding the Ratification of Gary Amling as CFO, Chief Financial Officer, Salary at $199,000 Plus Benefits from the General Fund, Ms. Fretwell.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Betsy Fretwell, City Manager. It's my pleasure to introduce to you this morning Gary Amling. He has nearly 30 years' experience in various local governments from California, Washington, and beyond, and he's held progressively responsible positions as he's moved around. Most recently, he's been with Santa Clara, which is a California city, and he was their Finance Director/Assistant City Manager during his service there. He was there for about seven years. Some notables while he was their Finance Director. He eliminated their structural deficit. Does that ring a bell for here? Hopefully, we never have to do that again. He's managed municipal budgets exceeding $750 million. He successfully negotiated the $1 billion Forty-Niners stadium deal, and he also managed the financial dissolution of the redevelopment agency. That was dictated by state law there. Prior to working in Santa Clara, he worked for La Mesa, California, and Bellevue, Washington in various capacities, including Administrative Services Director and Finance Director. He was acknowledged by the Silicon Valley Business Journal as Government Public Sector CFO for 2015. He's participated in a whole host of organizations related to municipal finance and held leadership positions in them, including California Municipal Finance Officers, Government Finance Officers, and others. And Gary has two degrees. One I know is critically important, is his Master's in Business Administration, and he also has his undergraduate degree from Northern Arizona University. After a very extensive search, we are so excited to have Gary join our team. It's sort of a weird day today to have Mark on his way out. I'm very pleased to have Gary on his way in, even though we have to wait a couple of weeks for him to move to get here to start. I have no doubt that he'll hit the ground running, and we're really excited about him joining our executive team. So, I'm recommending him for ratification this morning and hope that you guys will support that. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Fretwell. Welcome, and would you like to make some comments before we vote, just in case?
Well, thank you and good morning, Mayor Goodman, Mayor Protem, Ross, members of the City Council. I'm very excited to be here. I'd like to thank you for your consideration of my ratification this morning. I'd also like to thank City Manager for her confidence that she's placing in me and recommending me for this Chief Financial Officer position. My wife and I are very excited to be moving to Las Vegas and joining the City of Las Vegas. We'll be moving over the course of the next couple of months, but she's traveling overseas right now. I'm very excited to be following Mark Vincent. Obviously, I have big shoes to fill. Luckily, I wear a size 13, so I'm very excited about that. And I'll be starting on the 15th.
Wonderful, wonderful. Well, you know, oh, without question, it's just, it's very exciting. And so, any comments, questions before I turn to Mayor Protem, please?
Yes.
Do I? One sec, please?
No.
Well, I'm going to ask him to make a motion, so you go ahead, please.
Okay, all right. Well, then, just let me extend my welcome to Gary. I appreciate you coming here. It is tough to fill the shoes of a person who is recognized, not just in our city and valley, but statewide for his accomplishments on behalf of the state of Nevada as well as our city. I'm sure we're going to learn a lot from you about the experience of a small city, being in the crosshairs of the Nevada National Football League and ending up with a stadium. I can't wait to hear all the inside stories about what happened. And Santa Clara got the stadium, but San Francisco still gets all the buzz, so I don't know what was gained by the city, but not for today. The idea is that we sure could use your help. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Okay, please, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Your Honor, and Mr. Amling. Very nice to have you on board. You're going to fit right in. I would make a motion to ratify Gary Amling as our Chief Financial Officer for the City of Las Vegas, and that's my motion.
There's a motion to ratify and approve. Please vote and please post. We welcome you. We're thrilled.
Congratulations.
And Betsy has her dream, because she just mentioned that she tried to have Mr. Vincent assist her as Assistant City Manager. We have a wonderful assistant manager, but you've got the skills in case she needs to make a phone call, so, great. Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations and welcome to the team. And we're on to Agenda Item 36, Report by Public Works and Information Technology Staff Regarding an Update on the Activities That Have Occurred in the Area of Technological Innovation.
Good morning, Mayor, members of council. My name is David Bowers, Director of Public Works, and we're happy to be here today to give you an update on our innovation efforts. And we're going to start out first with one of our recent projects, and that's a hackathon that was conducted in conjunction with CES. And Michael was more involved with that, so I'm going to pass it over to him.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. Michael Sherwood, Director of Information Technology. The City of Las Vegas had a great opportunity during CES to partner with several companies that you've probably heard of, Intel, Amazon, Honeywell, IBM, and, of course, the City of Las Vegas, and partnering in a hackathon, which brought over 300 participants from out the world to our city to compete on creating creative solutions using technology. Of course, they have some of the best open data, Las Vegas being the number-one city in open data. We provided that toolset as well. These students came here, students and individuals, and came here to not only compete, to present ideas of what they did. Slide here. They spent 24 hours, complete cycle, coming up with solutions to different problems that they thought were challenges, ranging from crime to water conservation to smart and efficient government. I'm pleased to be able today to present the winning team that are here today from UNLV. Many of them are made it from UNLV. Ms. Gonzalez, if you'd like to come forward. Team Wingin' It created a solution. I'm going to let them explain the solution, but using the Amazon Alexa that we have sort of pioneered here in our city as being a tool that will help us in the future. They took that technology and some other data and created a great solution. I'm going to go ahead and allow you to introduce your team and tell us about your solution.
Thank you, Mr. Sherwood. Hello.
Good morning.
So, we're here and...
Let's do it one at a time, and if you would, introduce yourself with your name, please.
Okay, so I'm Maria Ramos Gonzalez.
I'm Sajid Wargis.
Welcome.
I'm Ernesto Zamora.
I'm Ruben Medina.
And I'm Derek Jewell.
Beautiful. Thank you very much. And if you'd take the microphone again, restate your name so we know who's speaking, please.
Thanks, I'm Maria Ramos Gonzalez.
Good.
So, we showed up to the hackathon, and we made use of the data that the City of Las Vegas had provided. We went there with some sort of idea for energy usage in a smart home, but when we saw the streetlight data put up, we were able to recognize the layout of it, because it's the same layout that NV Energy uses to report usage for just regular customers as well. So, we started filtering through the data. We noticed there was an anomaly in energy usage during the nighttime, and we ran with it. We spoke to people from City of Las Vegas while we were there. You know, there were a lot of great ideas floating around the room, and that's the one we stuck with. So, we were able to filter the data. We set up our own server using Raspberry Pi that we got there. And then, while some of us worked on the statistical analysis to make sure that the data made sense and that we could keep getting new data, as the City of Las Vegas brought it forward, we also had the Alexa Decision Tree. We were setting that up, converting all our code over to Python to make sure we could run it on our server, and then making sure that we could also present this in a written format. So, we were able to email it out. So, that way, let's say, somebody goes up, says, "Alexa, can you tell me how many faulty streetlights there are?" Alexa says there are nine faulty streetlights, which is what we found in the two-year historical data that we were analyzing. She asks if you want to hear them listed. You can say yes or no. Then she always gives you the option of having it emailed, and you can put however many emails you want. The report will go out to everybody. And then, we also added a little, like, personality to her. If you say, "No, I don't want to hear them," and "No, I don't want the email," she says that is not a very smart way to keep a safe city.
Oh, exactly.
So, let me add in just a little bit more, that that was a great, there were so many great, that was the winning team concept, and you sort of see on your screens sort of the, and she's gone over the overview of it, of how they used a bunch of technology, but in 24 hours, the amazing part is, within 24 hours, developed a solution that actually we're working now internally within IT to embrace, working with this team here, working on embracing that technology and actually bringing it to actual production where we use it within the organization as well. Another amazing thing was that not only was, this wasn't just selected, it was selected by some of a great panel of judges. Obviously, our own Betsy Fretwell was on the judges' panel, as well as leaders from Honeywell, Intel, IBM, and Amazon as well, and recognizing this as being a standout solution. Our participation in events like this are very important, because not only do we get this solution, the winning solution, we also got solutions on crime efficiency and reporting. We had other solutions and other ideas that we're able to bring back to our city now and develop internally through partnerships with students and with other organizations. So, I just want to thank them very much. I don't know if Betsy wants to add on.
I loved this solution, because sometimes the way we find out things is by driving around. And when you have 52,000 streetlights, that doesn't seem so efficient. So, these guys, in less than 48 hours, figured out how to read our data and tell us electronically every morning where we should dispatch crews to figure out what's going on with one of those 52,000 streetlights.
Wonderful.
A much more efficient system and great application for a whole host of other kinds of analytics that will help us be smarter in the way we deploy our limited workforce. And so, I was totally thrilled by this. And Michael didn't go into it, but I mean, there was another group that came up with this whole tree health program that helped you figure out if there was enough water going to a tree, what the wind conditions were like, what the local weather conditions were like, what the health of the tree was like, all by using equipment that they bought at Circuit City. I'm not kidding. I mean, it's that kind of creativity that we saw in this room, and the room was abuzz with all these fantastic ideas, and I think the city's in a better position. It certainly opened my eyes to what can be done in a very short period of time when you've got a bunch of smart people sitting in a room dedicated to looking at our data. So, I'm hoping that we're going to be able to replicate this, and Michael and I are working on that right now, to see if we could do maybe one of these a year. And I think it'd be a great opportunity for us to talk to you about what kinds of problems you're seeing in your wards. Maybe we can get a bunch of smart students to help us solve those in a creative, cost-effective way going forward. So, I think this is a great step for the city, and I'm really thrilled, and I know Michael's excited about this, and I'm so proud of this team. They just did incredible work. And two, all four, all five of you go to UNLV? How many?
We about passed through UNLV at one point or another.
All UNLV students at one point or another. So, I mean, we're producing these very smart individuals right here at home, so I think this is an incredible testament of what we can do for ourselves.
Well, and hopefully, from your mouth to God's ears, that it will, and I'm looking at you, Mike, that CES continues oncoming, that you coordinate another hackathon each year. I'd like to hear where these students went to high school then. Don't tell me you didn't go to high school.
Ernesto Zamora? Well, I went to high school in Cuba.
That's fine.
Yes, and right now, I'm PhD candidate of computer science at UNLV.
Wow. Well, we know the education in Cuba is outstanding, so no wonder.
Sajid Wargis? I graduated from Advanced Technologies Academy, or ATech.
Wonderful, wonderful. Yeah, we just have some great schools.
Derek Jewell? I graduated from San Diego Lutheran High School.
Wonderful. Congratulations. That's great.
Ruben Medina? I graduated from Gladstone High School in Covina, California.
We welcome you to Las Vegas. Oh, yes?
Maria Ramos Gonzalez? I graduated from Advanced Technologies Academy as well. That's where I met Sanju. And I'm currently a PhD student of mechanical engineering at UNLV.
Excellent. Well, we are so proud of you, and this is so wonderful. How exciting that you've done this for the city, but how exciting. You must be thrilled to death. Mr. Bowers, did you learn a lot?
Oh, it's very impressive what these students can do, and it really gave us a lot of ideas for future hackathons and what they might be able to accomplish, so very impressive team.
Simply fabulous.
Well, Mayor, I'm wondering if we shouldn't have the marshals just lock them back up in a room for 24 more hours.
That's good.
See what else we can get out of them. Congratulations, you guys. I'm going to tell you something. I think after Ms. Fretwell, our City Manager, left CES, I think she called me and was giddy on the phone, telling me about what you guys did and how incredible it was, and even the trees, the tree stuff that you were telling me about, too. So, this is exciting and cutting-edge, I think, and Ms. Sherwood, we have got to be the only government on the cutting edge of this kind of technology. I mean, you probably know much more than I, because I'm kind of sheltered here in the city, but I understand, Ms. Fretwell, we were the only government entity at this, at the CES show this year?
We had a team attending CES this year, and we were the only ones that participated in this hackathon. in this hackathon. And I'm not sure who else was able to attend from other agencies, but it was known we were there, that's for sure.
We were the only government agency that proved, that actually was part of the hackathon at CES. There were other data sources that we provided through our open data portal that were from other agencies, but the only active agency, I need to include Don Jacobson and other team members, Chris Craig and Craig Andrews of IT, that actually spent their weekend there assisting students with questions on our open data platform. They did a fabulous job, and we are working with the presenters of the, or the creators of the Smart Cities Hackathon to maybe bring another one just to our city, just for the City of Las Vegas, and look at different types of challenges.
Mayor, that would be huge for us to do that and claim ownership to that, so I highly support that. Again, congratulations, you guys. Thank you very much for being Las Vegans.
Madam Mayor?
Yes. Don't go yet. Wait one sec. Councilwoman would like to address you as well, please.
I've just been so impressed with what IT's doing and the UNLV students are doing in many different ways, helping us in the city. And I was wondering, I'm still getting complaints from people about park lights. I had just got one yesterday from Baskin Park. Please let, why do those lights go off while the children are still playing, and then they'll come on again after a few minutes? And I was thinking, if you used Alexa for this, you might be able to use Alexa with the lights, because I know the ones in the home, they have, they control the lights. And maybe it would, I don't know how it would work or anything, but some people then say, "Our lights are on and nobody's there," you know, and these are things because it's just difficult. But something like this might be utilized in that also, so I wanted to mention it to you.
That's a very good idea, Councilwoman Tarkanian, and we'll definitely look into that aspect as well, and see if there's something to do immediately to resolve that problem as well.
Right. Well, I know we try all the time, it just can't.
Thank you, Councilman Beers.
Good work, young adults. I just want you to know that you're fortunate that none of the six of us were on your committee, because I believe that we would have fought hard for that. No, I don't want a report. No, I don't want an email decision tree to respond instead. Oh, well, then I'll just email it to the mayor.
No. But this is really exciting for us. Thank you, Councilman Beers. I mean, we're just proud of you, looking forward to the future, and just would love to have a home base right here at the city.
Well, Mayor, I have one more question.
Yes, please.
What did they win?
I apologize, Mayor, and Mayor Prothem and Council. They won, there was cash prizes of up to $15,000 plus additional items. I believe the winning team, correct me if I'm wrong, Maria, or team members, $10,000 was the prize that they earned from having the winning idea. Correct?
Wow.
Plus additional hardware and other types of electronic items.
So, home base here, please, Mr. Sherwood.
Circuit City item type.
Thank you.
No, Best Buy, sorry. I apologize, sir.
Thank you, and congratulations, and hope you'll be around for a long time with us.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And on this item, I'd also like to thank NV Energy. They have been working with us very closely. NeoRoller's been working with UNLV Business College in addition, and they're helping us develop some of the architecture it's going to take to communicate with the cloud and different things. So, that's moving forward. I got an email this morning from NV Energy, they're ready to go, so it's really good news on that front.
Who's your point-guarded NV Energy, Patina or...?
No, it's Edgar Patino.
It is Edgar, yes, I saw him. So, wonderful.
Right, and then he's going to, of course, move it towards somebody else, but yeah, it's moving. All right, so with that, we'll move forward on the presentation. The next thing I'd like to talk to you about was another event tied in with CES, and this is the Go NV Summit. We were very fortunate to have partners that were the RTC, NDOT, Governor's Office of Economic Development, and Atkins really put on a great show for us, and it brought in all kinds of speakers, local, national, international, both public and private. So, I'm going to roll this video to give you a better idea of what this is about, and of course, Mayor, you were the main guest of honor in that event, so please roll that.
Such fun. This summit really talks to the future. It is about moving people, first of all, moving them safely, but getting them to work, getting them to their homes, getting them to interact and be a positive force wherever they live.
Nevada Center of Advanced Mobility here in the great state of Nevada is partnering with Geneva Alliance for a year-long pilot project intended to help address these issues: safety and capacity and congestion within our region.
This state, this region, this valley has experienced so much growth, you are quite literally the envy of not just the world, but specifically those private sector entrepreneurs who want to come in and build where there's still so much opportunity to build.
You don't need a controller anymore. You don't need smartphone anymore, so all you need is this command center. At the same time, this command center receives real-time images, videos, and real-time flying datas from the Ghost Drone.
The opportunity for intermobility in a city like Las Vegas and cities around the world, from a local perspective, internationally, there is change afoot, and Ali is one of those pieces of change.
There was a lot of events we were going to, and a lot of conversation, but a whole lot of, not much discussion about what people were really committing to and the path that they were taking going forward. So, that's what today's event is about, is learning from international perspectives, the local perspectives, and the federal level, finding out what people are actually doing and what they're committing to over the next 12 months and beyond.
In the next three months from today, we'll run a full-size Hyperloop.
It is a comfortable and safe transport hole for passenger and cargo pods.
It's not a train, and it's not just about speed. These are examples of how business models will change, enabled by what I call physical broadband. This is going to change everything.
So, thank you to the RTC for producing that video. It really was an impressive event, and it drew over 300 people from all across the industry. It was right before CES started, so we had great attendance. And what was really impressive about it is some of the technology we saw there. That drone you saw actually carried people. It was called a company eHang, and while that may sound far-fetched, you know, somewhere out in the distant future, it's not. Airbus is a, you know, a large airplane company, and they're actually talking about having that piloted before the end of the year. So, people flying in these drones, vertical takeoff and landing vehicles, before the end of the year. And just this week, Joanna and I met with Uber, Uber Elevate, and they expressed interest in coming to Las Vegas to demonstrate this type of technology. They said there's 30 different manufacturers working on this type of equipment right now, believe it or not. And they're also interested in coming here and doing Uber deliveries, like they're doing their fast food now, and delivering packages instead. So, they're really looking to expand, and they really like our market, so it's very promising.
Madam Mayor, if I just might say something. About a year and a half ago, I attended a conference where they were talking about, this is what we're going to be able to do, probably take 10 years or something like that, and amazingly, in less than two years, they're doing these things they were talking about. So, they're moving so rapidly, it's hard to keep up. You're very right, doing what you're saying.
I agree, Councilwoman. It's amazing, you know, what an event like CES does, to bring these people together, to put the right people in the right places, and advance this innovation so quickly. And CES itself, if you have a chance to go next year, I highly recommend it. Actually, if you get online soon enough, it's free, and the halls, the exhibition halls are just amazing, what you can see out there. And really, what's changed about CES now is that it's more about automobiles and vehicles, and you know, what's happening with the transition in that industry. But at the same time, you can attend sessions on autonomous vehicles, smart cities, policy questions, that type of thing. So, if you get a chance, you know, please attend next year, you'll really enjoy it.
Was Hyperloop out there too? Did they have a...
You know, they were definitely at our conference, but they, I did not see an exhibit, no. You know, and just so you realize, Hyperloop was in our video, you know, what they showed in their video, of course, is their high-speed tube, and I've heard speeds of 700 miles an hour plus. And what they anticipate doing is, you know, potentially connecting two cities like Los Angeles and Las Vegas, and doing it in half the time that you could do in an airplane ride. I mean, it's that fast, there's not going to be the waiting times you have, you know, to get through security and everything else, so it's really impressive what they're presenting. And those pods that, what they're showing, was actually people, you know, getting out of that tube and then taking that pod to their office or a better location.
Were they able to stand up after the force of 700 miles an hour? You see, you know, in the airplanes, when you're up in one of those jets, all your skin goes backward. 700 miles an hour!
That is phenomenal.
Oh, my gosh, they'd have to carry me away in an ambulance, I think. Oh, my gosh.
You know, and they were saying that it's such a slow acceleration, you know, over a very long distance, that it's not that right.
You don't know you're dying in there.
Right, it's not what you expect.
It's slow into it. I can't believe it.
Correct, correct. Okay, well, what brought us here, you might remember, a year ago, was that you passed a resolution to create the Innovation District. And it was really successful, and we did this in advance of our Smart City application through the DOT. And what the Smart City application did is, it really showed that the city was behind this, the elected officials, the city manager, and it really did work. It put us in the headlines, it created introductions for us, you know, with multiple types of people in the industry, and we've been busy ever since. It's impressive. So, with that coming through now, you know, it's really given us the opportunity to expand. We're, and really, we're putting the infrastructure in just now. And then you also might ask, you know, why are we doing this? And I think, first of all, for the City of Las Vegas, it does bring in more tourists, just like you've heard about the medical tourist industry, you know, this is the innovation tourist. And you saw in the recent autonomous shuttle how so many people came in, came downtown to get on that shuttle, and innovation will do the same thing, especially if we're early like we are now. You know, it's also going to make our roads much safer, it's going to create diversity in the industry, because we're hoping to bring some of these people into the brick and mortar and have them, you know, reside here. It's going to make it safer for pedestrians, as well as, you know, the police are going to have a better feel of what's going on in the streets with some of the sensors that we can install now. And there'll be better connectivity from the people to the police if needed. So, it's very important, and on top of that, there's, you know, the economic diversity that we have in our city. This is going to even the playing field, people that maybe don't have access to the internet, that type of thing. Hopefully, our innovation will spread out wide enough.
Not to add more confusion already that's there, is there any signage to the layperson or the tourists coming in that they have entered the city's Innovation District? Can we do anything, even if you only paint the top half of the light poles a certain color to indicate that this is the Innovation District? For all these people, they're going to fly in here to see this.
There's none at this time, but that is a great idea, you know, and I think as it becomes more apparent that it is Innovation District, we'll definitely bring in that sign, and you know, and it doesn't have to be something that hits you in the face, but I agree, the signage as you come in would really make it more obvious. That's a great idea.
Well, and two, and perhaps marketing through our website, I'm sure you already are up on the website, but that would really be helpful to the layperson who said, "Oh, I've heard about this Innovation District. Where is it beyond the Container Park?"
True, true. We agree. Thank you.
And then we should advertise it out at the airport.
We'd like that.
Yes. Where are people coming in? Young people, millennials, this is what they want. They don't want something else. Yes, please.
Thanks. I just wanted to highlight what sometimes is a hidden component of the marvels that we've just seen, not just this discussion on the district, but the hackathon winners as well. And that is the concept of open data. One of the big, one of the holes that Betsy has to fill in the wake of Mark's leaving, he was the chair of that committee and did a great job harnessing multiple, in fact, I think all the major departments within the city, to help develop open data standards and promulgate that. That's going to be a key element. That's like the ground upon which all this stuff gets built, and I just wanted to remind us to not lose sight of that hole that Mark leaves in his departure.
Very important. I'll just say really quickly that Michael is going to fill that role for the foreseeable future for us in Mark's absence, give Gary some time to get his feet wet and see how things go. But Councilman Beers is right. The data sets that we make available to the public are the foundation from which all these things emanate, these solutions emanate, and you just saw one of them today with the hackathon team. So, those are the kinds of things that we're working to integrate together with our innovations team, that these two co-lead. And in the category of maybe more than you want to know, we're really taking a little different approach than a lot of other cities are taking. Many other cities are creating just a plainly titled Chief Innovation Officer and putting a small team with them and saying, "Go forth and do great things." I'm a firm believer that it's everybody's responsibility to be innovative here, and I don't think it's one person's job. So, in our typical fashion, we've created a team, and we're trying to resource it, and you've enabled us through things like this resolution and the Open Data Committee and some of these other Bloomberg Initiative opportunities that we've taken advantage of, to help really build a solid framework to catapult our efforts to that next generation of service and infrastructure delivery for our community. So, I appreciate your patience and your vision on this, because we're kind of building things from the ground up, but we're using our values to do it, and we're using our incredible talented employees to make it happen. So, I'm with you 100%, Councilman Beers, we've got to make sure we get the foundation right.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, please.
At some point in time, could we be brought more up to date as to what we're doing now, what's existing in the Innovation District, and what we're looking for, just in case as we go through our lives and the contacts we make, that if something comes up, we could refer to you?
Certainly, Councilwoman. In fact, there's more material here, take a look at that, and if you have questions after that or more information you need, you know, we'll be glad to provide it to you.
For the district that the mayor is saying we should brand?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Please, go ahead. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, no, that's great.
You know me, you're used to me.
Obviously, an opposite, a great segue into the innovation team itself. Betsy is right, you know, she saw innovation as a solution to several problems: transportation, the data management. And she was pushing us as long as two years ago, you know, on what we're going to do about this. And when we put a proposal together, it was for something that was more structured according to other cities, you know, we need a manager to handle this, and she did reach back at that point and say, "Listen, we have the capability, we've got a new IT manager coming on board, and we think he's the right person," and it turned out that he was exactly the right person. So, from that, we've built a team that's going across the entire city that includes IT, planning, EUD, our administration department, and communication, as well as all the departments, because when it comes to innovation, I think everybody has something that they need a gap filled, so it's worked out very well. And as part of that team, there's an Alliance for Innovation that Betsy's a part of. She got us in the program, there's only six cities per year that participate in that, and it's really helped us form the team more succinctly, it's allowed us to function better, and given us some great ideas on how to move forward. As part of our class project, you might say, is basically a roadmap to completion, you know, where do we want to be in a year, two years, and what's going to happen along those ways for those critical points on that timeline. So, it's pretty exciting to see that happening. And then finally, you know, I can't forget our partners, I mentioned a little bit already, but it really is amazing what happens when you have a region like we do that's so supportive, the RTC, NDOT, the Governor's Office of Economic Development. It's unbelievable, you know, what they're pushing our way, asking how they can help us, and then vice versa, and you know, we help them whenever we can, but it's really an impressive community event. So, you guys all recognize our autonomous shuttle that we had down in Fremont Street? It was very impressive, and the articles, the fame that this brought us, it's, you know, not just the local news stations and newspapers, but it went national, it went international, and it was really phenomenal. We checked yesterday on Google to see how many hits we'd get if we just searched for Navia Las Vegas, and it was over 9,000 hits, you know, so there was a lot of articles written on this, so it was amazing what it brought in. And we really have Keyolus, Navia to thank for that, and I believe we have Francis Julian[1728.47] in the audience. Francis, you can come on down if you'd like, Francis, please. Francis is with Keyolus, and if it wasn't for him, we would not have this shuttle in this town, because Francis explained to me yesterday, we had a celebration lunch that Joanna put together, and he was telling us that, you know, Keyolus is in a lot of different cities, and there were a lot of cities requested to have this, to be first, and that Francis reached out to the president and said, you know, it's got to be Las Vegas, you know, this is where we're best seen, and, you know, they're our big, we're the biggest customer we have, so.
And you did mention, of course, that we wanted to manufacture them, we not only want to have them and be the first and the second and the third.
That's the first thing.
We want this to be the manufacturing base for these as they're distributed.
After the press conference, that's the first thing I talked to the Navia president, actually giving all the advantages of having a factory here in Vegas.
Wonderful, wonderful, I heard, Councilman Beers, I heard you say something.
Uh, no.
Go ahead.
We did go down, I did go down and ride it, yeah, it was a pretty interesting little vehicle. And it'd be fun to have a fleet of those running around downtown. But I'm not surprised that the guy picked us, we're the only other Eiffel Tower on Earth, right?
I just want to state, though, how incredible it was to work with the city, I really have to, I went to see Mr. Marshall Ortiz, Joanna, who's in the city. The conclusion is never bet against Vegas. Everybody of my peers, whether it's in France, in Australia, were basically laughing, saying, you'll never pull a pilot in three weeks at New Year's Eve on top of it and pull it off. And did we pull it off, ever? It was just such a success. It took almost a year in France to do what we did in three weeks with the incredible team of David and Joanna, I mean, it was incredible.
Well, we were so impressed, and we know, as you look to the future, if we can ever get our arms around technologically what is going to be in the future, we welcome you. I mean, we really want to see that marriage move forward, and terribly excited, and it was a beautiful ride. I just wish it would hold more seats.
Sure, sure. Well, hang tight a second, I'll go through this presentation just in case there are specific technical questions.
Oh, go ahead, please, go ahead, we just jumped ahead, sorry.
And I do want to acknowledge Joanna Wadsworth, she's also in the crowd, because she took us on, she took full ownership in it, and I know she went down there at 5:30 in the morning on the Sunday before to help set up, and she was surprised to see how many people were still on the streets from the night before, but.
Yes, it's Las Vegas.
Yeah, so it's really a major effort on her part, and she pulled it together well. So as you know, the electric is fully autonomous, did not require a driver, it was electric, and it had multiple technological systems on board to help guide it and making the decisions on its driving, primarily GPS, it was guided through the streets, you know, using GPS assignment. The LiDAR is another thing, and if you, let me advance the slide, if you look at that screen to the right, that's the screen that kind of shows how LiDAR is working, and it also had cameras on front, stereo vision, to help it read signs and also detect objects and give it kind of a depth of feel for that. I'd like to advance this video showing that LiDAR screen to kind of show us, people walk by, how it's recognized. So you can see now, the screen itself and the people walking behind it are showing up as dots on that screen, and then the shuttle itself is smart enough to say, okay, that's out of my area of concern, I can see it, but it's not an issue. So it makes all these decisions like any of its computer would, you know, to let it know what to do.
It's like whiskers on a cat.
Exactly, that's a good analysis, right, right. And then, of course, the features on the Arma. One major feature is it has dual air conditioners up on the roof there, sensors are in the front, you can see here, all the sensors I talked about, stereo vision, LiDAR, photo, it's, at the same time, they're on the back, so you cannot tell the front from the back on this vehicle, it's very impressive, it can go either direction. Anything else to add on that, that you would like to say?
No, well, right now it was going back and forth, but that vehicle actually has four-wheel steering, so it actually can pivot on itself.
Read the state.
So for the test, we actually purposely did not do it, because on the Sunday when we experimented with this, the G-force was actually a bit high, probably for, well, mainly for the night crowds that we were going to transport, we didn't want to have small accidents on Fremont at night, so we elected just to go back and forth, but it's a really nimble tool, and we're really looking to expand transit opportunities with vehicles up there.
Well, we know it's going to be airborne soon.
Yes.
No airplanes, forget it, no more pilots, just Navia up in the air.
Yep. All right, well, thank you so much.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
I mean, really, did everybody ride?
I didn't go.
Oh, shame on you, when's it coming back?
You know.
So we need more rides.
They're doing some pilots in other areas now, after Las Vegas, of course, but we're definitely in negotiations, we're having discussions, what it's going to take to bring it back and put it in town, along with the factory.
If any of you want to have a ride, it's still at the SMF, so at the Decatur and Sunset, I'm more than welcome, you can phone me up, and it's going to be a pleasure to have you ride in it.
Cool.
It is, it's really cool and clean and small.
And we'll actually have you drive it if you want. There's a driver feature on it as well, so.
Thank you so much, thank you.
So as we're talking about, we've been looking at this downtown transportation problem for quite some time, as the mayor knows, and what we're trying to do is resolve the last mile, which means, you know, if a person comes in, say, to the Bonneville Transit Center, how do they get down to Fremont Street, or how do they get to this restaurant, you know, the mall? And there's really not a good, quick solution for that right now, you know, it's too far to walk sometimes in the heat we have. And then the other question is, you know, if you work downtown, you know, how do you get to a quick lunch without getting in your car, taking up another parking spot, you know, burning the gas? So we've been looking for an efficient way to move people around that's free or cheap, you know, so it's a difficult system to figure out. And this shuttle could take care of that, we'd have to go in and do some upgrades to make sure it could communicate with the signals. But as you know, we've also been communicating with Free Ride, who operates in other cities, with Polaris Gym, and then two other companies since then have come and spoke to us, wanting to do that same type of model, but much more cheaply. We've been in conversations with Uber and Lyft to maybe supplement their fares so that, you know, riders could ride cheaper or free. And then, and then finally, to bring this all together, we're going to have a summit, again, Betsy's idea, at the end of this month with the downtown stakeholders, to really get feedback from them and see what's on their minds, you know, do they want something that's a fixed stop? Do they want it on demand? Does it need to be free? Do you want more stops? Are they willing to pay for those stops? So that's the kind of questions we're going to be asking. So other projects we're working on, Councilwoman, the Geneva Alliance, actually working closely with us right now, we're trying to tie down a contract, and what they want to do is install monitors within city vehicles to help communicate with the drivers when there's responses that are necessary from the infrastructure and the roadway. So if a car is moving quickly towards an intersection or pedestrian crosswalk, say at, you know, Fourth Street and Fremont, you know, they'd get a warning, slow down, pedestrian lights on, you know, and sometimes, you know, just these signals aren't enough. If we had cameras out there on the streets that sensed pedestrians that are crossing when they shouldn't be, it could warn the driver of the same type of thing, so it creates a higher pedestrian safety. It'll also allow this vehicle to talk to the other vehicles, so if they saw them coming at high speed together, it would alert both drivers. And then finally, it'll give us feedback on those vehicles. So if we see a lot of these vehicles in a certain area, and they're always stopping for a longer period than we feel they should, that'll cause our transportation team to go down and look at that area to see what's going on. So it's really a great tool for us. And then the Podcar City, this is a major conference that held every year, they actually looking to come to Las Vegas next year, it's already been set up, they're going to host it right here in the council chambers, so 350 participants last year, and they're going to have the same thing on their mind, you know, what do we do to move autonomous vehicles forward? What are the concerns with doing that, and what policy needs to be resolved? So to have that in our chambers right here, as a nationwide, worldwide concern, it was really going to accelerate Las Vegas on the map. And then, it's not just these two, but we're working with dozens of companies, especially Mike, there's a lot of people that come out of the woodwork when they see our names in these headlines, they want to be in Las Vegas, so it's very impressive to see what's happening. But the thing is, they need infrastructure. Right now, we do have things in place, but it's still not a smart enough city for them to operate in. So what we have in place now is, we have a lot of fiber optic cable in conjunction with the RTC's FAST program that allows us to communicate with the signals, they can control the timing, they can get video feedback from those signals, which is a great opportunity for the city to have, a wireless network that's been in place for some years, but it's not robust yet, so we're going to make that much stronger, both the private side and the public side. DSRC radios are dedicated short-range communication radios, are what you put inside a controller box to allow an autonomous vehicle to communicate with the signal, so it knows the timing, it knows it could slow down, speed up, so it's not waiting for the signals, and it's a better indicator than just a picture of a light, is to actually know what it's doing through communication. GPS is something else that we have, localized GPS, typically, you will not see this in the other city, but what it does, instead of just a satellite feed that gives you an accuracy of three feet or so, we have a localized GPS that has repeater antennas that can give you accuracy with less than an inch as far as distance horizontally. So it's very impressive for these units to be able to operate autonomous vehicles can run from them. And then finally, 3D mapping, we already have it downtown mapped, so we know, we've driven through, just kind of like a Google car does for street view, only it's using the LiDAR system, similar to what the autonomous shuttle used, and it knows exactly, you know, to within an inch of where every curb is, where every sign, so if an autonomous vehicle had to rely upon that, they could, because they know where they're at relative to this, the different infrastructure, and they could drive through the streets. So the biggest project we're working on right now, on the transportation side, is the downtown connected corridor. There's 28 blocks showing here, that's Main Street, Stewart, Fourth Street, and Bonneville. We're going to finish tying all these areas together with a high-speed fiber cable, which will allow us then to have direct communication with all the signal boxes in that area. So we'll be able to synchronize the signals a little better, we'll get better feedback, we're going to be able to tie in pedestrian crossings better, if we want to put cameras out there, we can do that. So it's really a big advancement for us, and we're doing it right now. And what's even better is that this is where Michael picks up on the IT side, because he can use these connections to advance his technology. So I'll pass over to him.
Councilman Coffin, go. Thank you, Mayor, if I could ask a question here, and it actually applies not only to this slide, but the previous one, which talked about infrastructure. Before we, that's where your investments start to come in, a lot of money could be spent, and I'm just curious, before we get too far along, will we be able to avoid getting locked into a kind of system that requires us to have a specific kind of infrastructure, and then we find out that there are competing systems which might provide better choices? Or, I'm kind of thinking back 30 some years ago to the choice between the PC base of IBM's construction and the Apple construction, and 30 years later, they're still divided, and people had to make a choice, and it took enormous investment to cope, well, which way are you going to go? And so it proves, you've got to be flexible when you're starting to install infrastructure that you have to depend on. I'm sure whatever most of those things will be, would be universal, but can we stay flexible before we invest to make sure that we are truly flexible for everything in the future, some way or another? And you can't envision everything, but you've got to think a little bit about what you can't know now, let's see what we probably could figure out what we don't know.
Mayor, Councilman Coffin, let me tell you that, I'm going to go into the next few slides as well, but we're doing a layered approach, almost think about when it was a cold windy day and somebody wrapped you up with all different layers of clothes, so that modular approach is that we, our technology is going to be, is different components, so we have different layers, that we're able to, if something should change in the environment, remove that layer and add a new module in to maybe the next technology. So it's completely flexible, what we've designed is completely flexible, probably one of a kind in the US right now, and I am passionate about the ability for Las Vegas to be able to pivot as technology changes. We're on that, we're on that edge right now, we're combining several technologies together, not just betting on one technology, but betting on several, in a layered and then a strategic approach to be able to move regardless, if you look at the Beta VHS, all these different technologies that always wanted to, competing, we're sort of doing, leveraging a system that takes advantages of both technologies, and as one might go down, we leverage the other one up. And we're not, and the whole point of, sort of brings me to the next slide, is our pilot network where we're demonstrating, but I'll wait, because I know Director Bowers had a few closing comments.
No, I just think that's very insightful, you've raised a good concern, because, you know, there are DSRC radios that are of different types, you know, and we don't want to buy hundreds that are the wrong type and disappear in the future, so we're watching it very closely, and the DOT, the federal DOT, has already come out with some guidance on which system is going to prevail, so we're watching that very closely.
So here's the pilot network you see in front of you, this is the exciting time, this is actually something that no other city has undertaken at this level, across the United States, that has the capabilities of what we're proposing here, and these aren't things that are six months away or a year away, these are literally weeks away to where we're going to be launching some of this technology in and around City Hall. If you see the little green dots, another sort of hard to see on your screen, but those green dots are the first intersections that are going to have some of this cutting-edge technology available to them, where we'll actually be able to test and see how that technology works in real time.
So we're already, you're saying we're already right there right now?
Yes, Mayor, the fiber is in the streets, we've worked with several partners, obviously great city support from other departments, it's just not IT, it's public works, it's operations and maintenance, it's everybody coming together to help us, including our external partners that Director Bowers mentioned earlier, the RTC, the FAST Network, all those partners coming together, we're just taking their best skill sets and bringing it forward into a design and a strategy that we think is unparalleled to anything else that anyone else is doing. So we're actually going street by street, and at every intersection, we're taking fiber as well as building a private, secure wireless network. And the ability, again, that's that layering I talked about, we have inbound fiber, so if we want to do a kiosk in the middle of the street or a parking system, we can go ahead and wire that in. The wireless part comes in, and you'll see in the next slide when we get there, for sensor technology and analytics, but some of the things we'll be testing here in the next three to six months will be video analytics, so every one of these intersections will be a camera. That camera will be able to count the number of pedestrians walking through the intersection and the times of day. It'll be able to count the number of bicycles or motorcycles, and actually know the difference between a bicycle, a motorcycle, and a pedestrian. It'll also be able to count vehicles. Additional points of the video analytics technology is the ability that if somebody left behind a backpack, it would know and be able to alert us that something that's not necessarily supposed to be there is left in that area. Other areas that we're looking at is, in video analytics, is the ability, some of these sound far-fetched, and we're examining them, but not certainly we're deploying them. The ability, if you lost your child, to take a photo, that camera would actually, that image would be circulated to all the cameras in the area and would be looking for that individual. Sensor technology that this wireless network and this pilot network provides is the ability to add in any type of sensor, and on the next slide, I'm going to show you some of the sensors we're looking at. We talked about kiosks, those kiosks could be anywhere from bus scheduling-type kiosk, entertainment value kiosks, all types of different kiosk systems out there that we could take advantage of. Again, we're building a foundation for these technologies to come in, into our city, and building a system in a way that no one else can provide the things we provide. The pilot network, while it not only tests technology that we're interested in, it provides a foundation for next year's CES, what we hope to be, enable companies to say, hey, if you're here presenting at CES, instead of just showing the technology in a booth, that's really not real life, come on down to downtown Las Vegas and see the technology working firsthand. We're building this, again, data collection and open data is what we're really building it for, we're building it in an environment where all the sensor data and all the data comes back to one location, where we're able to share that data with our other partners, such as Metropolitan Police Department, with the RTC, or on the open data front as well, where students and others can come up with innovative solutions that will help propel our city forward. So with that pilot network you see that's going to be around, these are some of the technologies that we're able to use, and these are technologies we're able to probably put out, like I said, in the next 30 to 60 to 90 days, some of these will be out there. Top left, you have a smart trash can or a dumpster, basically when a dumpster gets full, it would alert you that the dumpster is full. You see right below it, this is a smart parking system, it's basically a transmitter, it knows when a car is over the space, we're able to look at, we're tying that, how do we tie that into a mobile application, how do we tie that into an Alexa, so you could say, I'd like to have parking space 15 downtown, it reserves it for you and holds it, you get there, you pay automatically. You see across from that up top, a kiosk and a parking meter, again, with our wireless infrastructure, that wireless layer, we don't have to necessarily dig up the street to communicate with these things, it's just now bringing power to the device, we can communicate with our own systems that we have, that we maintain, at a lower cost point than using a cellular system or some third-party type system. Down below the kiosk, you see, it doesn't look that good, but it is actually an intelligent light, those lights, 16 million colors can come out of the light, you can change the light, you can make it dance and do different things. Some of the applications we're looking at is during a downtown event, what if there was a significant event, we wanted to move people, you could turn certain lights red, you could turn other ones yellow, and then green, and hopefully managing and moving flows of people quickly and efficiently through the city. Top right, it looks like two sprinkler valves and some other types of equipment with a radio transmitter there, that's actually a soil monitoring system, you would embed those in medians, and it would, instead of just watering, I know we have water days throughout the year, but now you would only water when actually the trees and soil needed. Some of that was created at CES and the Hackathon, so that was a great solution, this is a commercial, same type deal, but a commercial viable solution. And then down below, you have what you've seen, and a lot of cities talk about as a big-belly trash can, an intelligent trash can that communicates, lets the operators know when it's full, so you don't go to every trash can every week, you only go to the trash can when it's full. All of these sensors will take data and move them back into our central data collection point, which we're working on here. We're also experimenting now and working with Switch to look at maybe housing our entire data center, especially for open data, and for the smart cities infrastructure at that facility. Not only is your city of Las Vegas thinking about itself and how we're going to help the central community, we're also looking out at our business partners as well, meaning our hotels and our central businesses. We're one of 10 cities right now in the United States to have a connection or a contract with Ingeniu. They are a private company. We have antennas on this building here and as well as our DSC and a couple of other city buildings. But now, not only have we brought IoT or the Internet of Things to the city, we've brought it to everybody in the city, the whole valley. The whole valley is covered with this technology. This technology allows you to go ahead and purchase your own IoT sensors and use them. So I have some examples of some of the technology that is, you could actually take advantage of. One is the smart soul shoe. Think of it, there's lots of different examples. I'll give you the example that I came up with, just thinking as I go through a lot of the technology I see, how do I apply it to the city? How could I apply it to business? And how do I help grow this so that we can become known for these type of things? The smart soul shoe, think of an assisted medical facility where you have people that could wander away from the facility. You put these into their slippers under their shoes. When they leave the facility, a alarm would go off at the central post and let somebody know that that person has left the area. Lots of other applications for even foot patrols and different types of security applications, making sure guards are making their rounds, all those type of things. You have a soil sensor in the middle there. Again, if you have your own growing, your garden or your own, around your own home, and you want to know when to water or when the trees really need water, you have that technology. Same for businesses, our hotels, all those that have large expansive planning boxes and different types of landscaping. You have a smart water module as well. Again, this is that layered approach. There are a lot of city facilities that aren't going to be able to take advantage of our fiber infrastructure, so we have this to layer on top. We didn't invest in this technology, other than we've allowed them to use our roof spaces at a few facilities. But now we have the ability to use this, and this is available today. We're one of, like I said, 10 cities in the US that have embraced this technology and brought it forward.
Mayor, may I?
Yes, please.
How did you do that physically? I mean, you just said something about the roof, and you said you've got this technology over the entire valley?
So it's a...
And Henderson, Henderson's got it too? Or can he use it too, or what? I mean, I mean, help...
Mayor, Mayor Protem, the technology, I mean, each one of these facilities, I believe, I want to say goes between 15 and 20 miles out from this building here. They went out and we helped them, partnered with the other jurisdictions to put antennas in their area. But we're the ones that brought, the city of Las Vegas, we all be proud of your leadership and the city manager and the executive team to bring that technology here and to bring it here as one of the first cities in the United States, as well as it's now throughout the entire valley. Everything we do with, all the technology we do, is a benchmark for sharing with all the organizations around. It's really about us being sort of the first in those areas, being the pioneer, leading the way, and coming up with real inventive efficiency solutions that perpetuate the technology further.
So it's an antenna on the roof?
It is an antenna on the roof. You can think of this as a low-band cell signal. This machine network is only, this Ingeniu system is made just for IoT technology or basically sensor technology. That technology just sends ones and zeros in a simplistic form. It's very low bandwidth. So that, what that means is they actually use a open frequency that's non-licensed, that they have a proprietary technology that allows them to know each device individually. And so our devices will never talk to someone else's devices. They're completely segregated, even though it's on the same network. We brought this in because we knew there would be applications for the city itself, temporary events where we want to bring in certain technology for a short time, parks that may just be out of the reach of fiber right now, just not possible, new areas of development that, again, we don't have fiber there yet. What was I going to do as a technology leader to still provide that seamless layer of technology across the city and still making sure that I'm providing, oh, I'm getting data back in? Think of all these things as oil rigs. That's what I like to think about, and the real money is the oil that I'm going to be mining up and putting into data.
Fiber, because I know I spoke to Jorge about fiber in the old part of the city. I'm wondering, if you look to the future and looking back 20 years, when people were saying, don't bother with landline phones anymore, everything's going to be wireless, why fiber? Why not iCloud or something that's satellite-driven? Why are we putting in all this cable wiring? What, is that the future? Is it going to be fiber, fiber that's concrete fiber that you're laying, or is it all going to be?
Mayor, I'm going to tell you it's going to be both. You need the fiber as a backhaul to be able to bring large amounts of information back. It's going to be a combination of wireless, and that's what we're doing here. Again, we're doing that layered technology approach. So we're not investing in any one. It is great, though, that this city has the fiber assets it has. That's, and labels us to bring, put wireless on the edges, the fringes, and then bring that data back quickly via fiber. Fiber's what's going to connect us...
But do you see, that's for the current time period, whatever that is, in technological days or hours or years? Do you see a future that is going to be totally without fiber and just everything?
Mayor, I would say not in the next 20 to 30 years. Fiber will be with us for a very long time to come. It will not dissipate. I think as much as we go wireless, there's a need for the underlying foundation, and that's the only, the only speed that you can get is through fiber. And there's still, companies are, as they bring in small cell sites and are still using fiber and using that communications technology, it's going to be a mix. You're going to have fiber as the base, wireless on top. Wireless is getting faster, it's getting, it's getting better. But again, for us, from emergency perspectives and all types of other security perspectives, having that fiber is like having a Fort Knox under the street.
Okay, because I know how costly that has to be for everything, having spoken with Jorge back a year or two ago, easy. But just looking to the future and based on Councilman Coffin's comment to you, and you're talking about the layers of clothing. So I know the cost is here, and we have to deal with the here and now, but you're saying it's not going to be for at least a decade or two. The fiber still will be necessary. I saw Councilwoman, and I know others want to make comp as well. Councilwoman?
With all of this new technology that you're using, and with the medical district being in the innovative district, are you working with people now who are planning the buildings for all of this new technol edge medical stuff that they're having? I know that we've been working in many different ways, but this has moved so quickly, I don't know, are we involved in that? For example, are we doing things around the medical district which will enhance the School of Medicine, which will enhance the people that are wanting to move in with medical goals?
Mayor, Councilwoman Tarkanian, yes. I mean, we're, have we reached out directly and had conversations with the actual builders? No. Right now, we're still in that building phase where we're bringing our technology and testing the different types of technology that we're going to be using. But you can be assured that either through transportation initiatives or through just straight technology initiatives, that we're partnering with every agency and every municipal type of organization within the downtown area and the innovation-specific district.
So you, with the School of Medicine, you'll be working with the people who are involved in building that?
At some point in time, yes. We would, we would reach out to them or they would reach out to us. I mean, again, you're getting a preview of what we've been working on for the last three to four months. A lot of this hasn't been, I mean, I'm comfortable now coming for you today and saying and talking about it because I know it's going to work. I'm positive that what we're proposing and the systems we're testing will work and are going to be, propel us to probably number one in smart city, at least foundational technology and ideas across the United States. Have we reached out specifically to certain entities? No, we have not.
I'm just thinking that some of the entities may not be aware of all this, and so it might be important as they move forward that we be sure to quickly share the knowledge with them before they do their budgets.
I just wanted to mention, Councilwoman, you know that we're investing in several of the roads in the medical district. And so the backbone that Michael and David have been talking about on the fiber is being installed as a part of that. So that becomes the highway, if you will, to connect in. And we've been talking with the various service providers that help work with those institutions so that this system becomes helpful to everybody. I think it's a little bit early to talk technical details about how you plug in and how the medical school, for instance, may be able to take advantage of it. But the nice thing is they're not going to be building a building in an area where there is no fiber. So, you know, we're, it's like an infrastructure decision on our part to build a smart street is what we're trying to do, and create a backbone that others can plug into for their technological needs. And I know where you're coming from on this, and I'm surprised Scott hasn't jumped in yet because of all of the conversations about basically using the medical district as an institutional network so that things that can be shared commonly among all of the providers and businesses in that area, that there could be a way for them to use that higher-level platform to accelerate the services they provide. So I look at this not too differently, probably some of the technological people won't agree with me, but, you know, it would be like investing in a chiller system in the downtown area like we have with Amoresco, where everybody benefits from having that giant chiller plant to help serve a whole host of buildings. It's a similar kind of setup with this fiber being made available, and it can help defray costs of individual groups having to make similar or investments that they simply can't do because it's not their right of way, it's ours. So we're trying to make this whole network work. And as you know, I don't know, Michael, you might want to go back to the map that shows the whole area we're focusing in on. That includes the whole medical district.
Yes, no, I saw that.
You know, so all of these areas, as we go in and we make infrastructure improvements, we're knitting all of this together in these new roadway design standards.
And as we do this, it'll serve not just in that area near in the medical district, you'll be serving throughout the county eventually. You'll be able to do that, I think. No?
As they put in fiber.
As they put in fiber. But I mean, I'm not talking about right now. Right now, we're talking about that as the spine, but I'm just looking into the future because things are moving so rapidly that other areas, other places might want to hook in so that we share resources. I just think it's marvelous what you've done. I just want to also tell you, I don't think you get enough credit for being so closely on the cutting edge, because we have been on the cutting edge and just seeing how we've moved so fast from where the conferences and everything are telling, I'm just praising you, that's all.
Wonderful. Councilman Beers had a comment, question two?
Thank you, Your Honor. These smart souls here, Councilman Anthony was concerned that Bernadette actually replaced his shoe inserts with these. How can someone check their shoe inserts to make sure that your wife hasn't slipped in these smart souls?
Uh, I have no answer.
Your wife is not standing behind you. Which, Mayor, leads to my question.
So, we...
Hang on, Mr. Sherwood. With your permission, Your Honor.
Please.
Mr. Sherwood, this random phase multiple access technology, how do our residents use that? Can they use that, or is this just for us as government?
No, again, we talked about that layering approach, Mayor Protem. So anybody can go to the Ingeniu website, and they have a list of partners that they support on their wireless network. So if your spouse or significant other wanted to purchase the smart souls, they could probably go through that and obtain that technology. This is open to everyone, any company, any resident, any individual within the Las Vegas Valley, thanks to the City of Las Vegas, can use these technologies in their home or in their business. And so this is, this is just a start. So if you thought we were moving fast, I'm going to move you to the next slide and talk about what we're doing already, based on some of the wireless networking sensor technology. So I'm going to start down in the bottom right. This is your IT department. I'm very proud of the staff in the IT department for some of the things that they're working on. I put a lot of pressure on them to move things quickly. So if you look in the bottom right-hand corner, you see a cellphone with an English translation access to city. You see right behind that, a road sign in another language. We already are working on that technology now. We're going to be practicing around City Hall with this, what we consider augmented reality, where a visitor will have a City of Las Vegas application. We're sort of dubbing it My Vegas, the same thing you've heard with the Amazon Alexa component. And they'll be able to take their cellphone with our app, hold it up to a work of art, hold it up to a street sign. It'll translate and provide a overview of the area. Above that...
Just as a thought. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to get silenced.
You did.
Please, go ahead.
Okay. Above that is the, is a building where if the air conditioning system was down or a water pipe was broken, as maintenance or facilities people arrived, they would take their phone, hold it up to the building. It would provide real-life instruction on where the issue might be, the temperature of the building, what pipe is in trouble, and then the remediation steps through the phone. So imagine you're looking at what you're, at a pipe in front of you, you hold your phone up or iPad or whatever type of device you have, and it will actually be able to tell you and walk you through step one, step two, step three, through that process. And that's some of the things, as far as the sensor technology and the app that we're building internally, will harness that. To the far left, we have a device called a HoloLens. We're already working on doing a virtual introduction to the mayor or virtual introduction to city officials, where you would dawn these in your private residence and you would be immersed in this facility here in real time. These aren't things that are, I'm talking are years away. These are literally over the next few months throughout this calendar year, especially the two on the right, will have some experience already. The development of the virtual reality component is something that we've just started working on. But again, that's some of the things that we're trying to bring forth as far as in the areas of virtual reality and augmented reality. As we move on, we're going to sort of tie back some of what you've already heard.
Mayor?
Oh, yeah. He wants to find his wife, but you know, there is, find my friends already, if you're worried about Bernadette. You can find her right now if she will let you into her cellphone.
I just need to know if she's going to go into a mall somewhere and spend money. That's all I'm concerned about. So these, these virtual glasses, the, whatever you call them, goggles, is that what you call them?
Yes, sir.
3D.
Yeah, I've seen the commercials on television. It's more for games and stuff like that. So do you know if they're actually using these for like, for training? Because I could see where law enforcement officers could use this for, for use of force and shoot and don't shoot, because the old technology was a screen. But do you know if they're actually making that for that sort of training? Because I could see it being used for our Department of Public Safety, Metro, those sorts of things.
Councilman Anthony, in my previous life, before I came here, I worked in law enforcement. We were actually taking, we used the old shooting screen, which is a, was like a movie screen with different cameras behind you projecting images, and you have that type. There are already, I know in and around Orange County, several companies, private companies that host law enforcement, but they use a virtual reality goggles. The military is also using those applications. We're trying to use these applications here for training purposes. Again, we haven't looked specifically at public safety, it's very new to us. We've only had a couple of weeks to sort of get an idea and feel of what we're trying to do with the technology, but the ability for it would be limitless. A lot of what we're trying to do is transparency for the citizen to give them that ability to reach out to you or to any member of government and have an interaction with them in a virtual way. But yes, you are correct.
And I'd like to add, too, in Public Works, we're already using these. We've talked about the fact we have 3D models in place. We can drop in improvements, like in Symphony Park, the multimodal bridge, the elevated trail, and we've already done that. And you can put these goggles on and spin around and look at what it looks like around you, so it's very impressive.
And I can assure you that in the future, the day will come, you go to your eye doctor, and they will put in a contact lens that gives you 3D.
That what?
3D.
Oh, 3D contacts.
These were, we saw these when we were little kids.
I know.
Around the world, the 3D. Please, go ahead.
So on the screen here, you have the artificial intelligence, you have the wireless network. How does all that work with Project Eddi and all the other things we've brought to you in the past? Again, all these technologies work together. So again, you have the Amazon Alexa, the top component up there. You have that unified identity. So think about in the future, being at home, you ask your Amazon Alexa to reserve you a parking space or pay a bill. You come downtown, that's where the wireless network knows it's you, based on you did the cellphone app that we create or other identification technologies we're working on. And so all that technology ties together to give you a over-integrated application across the city. Again, we're talking about the identity management. Well, I'm sure we'll be back in the near future to talk even more about that. be back in the near future to talk even more about that. But that's where we take your Facebook or any of those accounts and meld it into the city's system, so that you have one account for, or one ID for any city service or access you need. Another neat thing we're working on is this blue button that you see down below. Some of you, if you use Amazon, they have an Amazon dash button, where you could select, I need trash cans, or whatever water. And when you want it, you just go to your refrigerator, push the little button, and it will automatically deliver you that. So we're experimenting with that technology to be able to go ahead and purchase maybe a parking pass, or logo merchandise, or anything else that's City of Las Vegas-centric. Go ahead, they're $4.99 for actually buying one of the developer kits, $4.99. We're buying the developer kit. Amazon sells these. And so we'll be one of the first cities, again, to sign a pioneer that technology and use it in a government space. So all of that brings us to, what else are we doing in IT? We're doing a lot. But the number one thing is all these great things that we're doing. Also, we have to be thoughtful about the security that we provide. And so, again, Las Vegas as a municipality in this valley will be the first city on the fifth floor here in IT. We have started a room that's basically our cyber information center, where we're going to be monitoring all the networks that we have in the city in one location. We'll monitor, we'll observe, we'll respond to incidences, work with our partners accordingly. We've been reaching out to Metro, we've had a meeting with them and the FBI about how we have our one-of-a-kind center and how we provide them information that we get. Again, it's to protect our infrastructure. If you saw an article recently, Las Vegas is one of the top 10 cities for malware, or we'll call them computer viruses. We have a lot of technology we're bringing forth here, and this is our, sort of our first response to doing that. The second piece will be, we'll be looking at bringing back an item at some point in time, I'm sure, on Switch, where we will start moving some of our most critical assets out of some of our current facilities here internally, and moving them to the Switch facility, which is a hardened facility, a tier four in our industry, which is the highest level of protection you can have. But again, this is one of, a one-of-a-kind thing. No other city in, in the valley is this forward-thinking in computer security as far as our peers. We hope to go live with this. Again, all the things I show you today are things that are not years away, literally months or weeks away. We plan on sort of soft-launching this cyber information center here in the next, I'd say, 30 to 45 days. And again, then building it from there. As I move forward...
Before you do...
Yes, sir.
Is your office on the fifth floor?
It is, sir.
Mayor, and Betsy, with your permission, can I move my office to the fifth floor? Because I want to hang out with them for a little while.
I got some great shoes for you, sir.
I bet you do.
Those are Bernadette's. No, no.
So, so, so lastly, as we move to the end here, and I'll turn it back to Director Bowers, is we're creating also through the Office of Public Information, great partner. Again, everything we do in IT, we don't do anything alone. We do it with great partners and great support. It's to really start marketing the city, and our innovation district, and the innovative things that we're coming up with. We get a lot of requests about what we're doing, how we're doing it. So we're going to be launching innovate.Vegas, which is a website, sort of a subset of the city's website, but dedicated to those companies that are interested in partnering with us, dedicated to individuals and corporations that want to know what we're doing, but really talking about how we're creating a smarter city here in our valley and in our region, and how we're really differentiating ourselves from anybody else locally. And we hope to have this live in the next 30 to 45 days as well. And that will take me to the end, and now Director Bowers has anything to add.
Just, I'd like to add that we do really appreciate your support, city manager's support. And as we go forward, we hope to continue that, to see that support, to upgrade the innovation district and make this all possible.
Thank you. You know, I'd like to see at the appropriate time, Mr. Bowers, that, you know, the U.S. Conference of Mayors twice a year holds its conferences, and always looking for the innovative concepts that are futuristic, and wondering if in fact it would be appropriate in our June meeting, which will be in Miami, for the city through you and through Mr. Sherwood, to, I'll get you on a schedule to seminar it, or do you want to hold on to it, or where are you? And I think there'll be a lot of opportunities, obviously, the National League of Cities, but I was thinking, U.S. Conference of Mayors, that's 1,200 mayors of 30,000 and over, and they're always looking for ways for connectivity and bettering their communities.
Well, we're trying to keep this secret. No, I'm just kidding.
(laughing) I believe it.
No, no, of course, we'd be happy to help you. And in June, actually, we'll have a lot more headway made on the improvements we're doing now, so it might be a great timing.
Would you have a conversation, get back to me, just through a brief email after you speak with Betsy Fretwell to get the permission? Because I'd like to get something out to them to get it on schedule, and exactly what would be the most critical pieces to share that shows, you know, our innovation district and everything we're doing. I think it would be great promotion, and we could get an award. Ms. Fretwell loves awards.
Certainly.
(laughing). Great presentation. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
What a great team. Go on for more hackathons.
Yeah.
Okay, I got lost there. That was 36. That was a report. So, let's see, 37 has been stricken, so number 38. Recommending committee bills eligible for adoption at this meeting, Bill number 2016-70. Would you please read the bill?
Yes, thank you. Bill number 2016-70, in ordinance to amend the Unified Development Code to adjust the locational restrictions pertaining to the nightclub use and to provide further related matters.
Okay, Councilman Coffin, I'm sorry, would you like this move to...
Please, read the bill, counsel.
Thank you. Now, there's a motion.
(inaudible).
You have to make...
(inaudible).
I did have it read, but if you'd make a motion to approve, or not approve, whatever you want.
I will make a motion to approve.
Thank you. There's a motion on Agenda Item 38. Please vote. Once the little icon's there, which is lost in cyberspace, there it is. Please vote, and please post. Agenda item that carries, Agenda Item 39, recommending committee bills, that's quite a right, eligible for adoption at a later meeting. Items 39, Bill 2017-1, will be heard a later meeting. There are no new bills, so we'll move on to Agenda Item 40.
(inaudible).
No problem. Agenda Item 41, 40 and 41 have been withdrawn.
Yes.
So now we're on to Agenda Item 42. RQR 68071, public hearing, applicant Lamar Central Outdoor LLC owner Bell Real Estate LLC, possible action required, review of and approved. Special use permit U-0223-9 over, 40-foot tall, 12-foot by 24-foot off-premise, signed at 1719 Industrial Road. CM Commercial Industrial Zone Ward 3, Councilman Coffin, the staff recommends approval. This is a public hearing, which I declare open. I see Mr. Perrigo, I see a couple of people here from the city, and I see the applicant or representative. Representative. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Your Honor. Everything's in order, and staff is recommending approval.
And who are you, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. Tom Perrigo, Planning Director.
Thank you. And who is the person typing next to you?
Mr. Lowenstein, Planning Section Manager.
Thank you. Please.
Scott Nafsky with Lamar Advertising, 1863 Helm Drive. We accept staff's conditions and ask for your approval.
Wonderful. Councilman Coffin?
I move for approval.
Okay, there's a motion to approve on Agenda Item 42. Please vote, and please post.
Tough.
Oh, I had to ask Brad, but I'll bring it up in public.
(inaudible).
No, it's wonderful. All right, Agenda Item 43, EOT 68216, public hearing, applicant-owner Garden City LLC, for possible action, request for an extension of time for non-conforming motor vehicle dealership new use at 5750 Sky Point Drive, TC Town Center Zone, SCTC Service Commercial Town Center, special land use designation, Ward 6. Hello.
Hold on.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you.
Staff recommends denial, but it is a public hearing. I declare it open, and so you are either the applicant or representative. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Tom Perrigo, Planning Director, for the record. As this is a seventh one-year extension of time requested for the legal non-conforming automobile sales use, and as there is not substantial evidence of an economic hardship, staff is recommending denial.
Okay.
Hi, David Mathi, 1806 Industrial Road. We have actively been trying to lease this facility. As you may remember, it was a Dodge dealership at one point in time, and we've been actively trying to bring in a new car dealer to replace that, and we would ask for your approval.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to be heard on this Agenda Item? Okay, my close public hearing, Councilman.
Thank you, Your Honor. You're not the gentleman I spoke to yesterday on the phone?
Yes.
You are? Okay. Did you want to share who you're talking to?
Oh, sorry.
Is that public information or not?
Yes. We're working with Chopper for a Dodge Ram dealership. We've also spoken with the Earnhardt people from Buick GMC about coming to the facility. That's as much as...
Well, keep talking to him, because the dealerships are coming, coming back out to the Northwest, so that's significant. And I'd like to see another dealership there. So I'm, even though I agree, understand where staff's coming from with the recommendation for denial, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve this for a one-year extension.
Thank you.
And get somebody. And I'll help you if you need me to.
Yes, I appreciate it.
Okay, there's a motion to approve. Please vote, and please post. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. On Agenda Item 44, are we already there? Goodness gracious, look at that. Set the date on any appeals filed or required public hearings. I'm instruct the city clerk to set the public hearing dates and appeals from city planning commission meetings, dangerous building or nuisance letter abatement.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, citizen participation. The citizen participation, public comment during this portion of the agenda may be, must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the city council. No subject may be acted upon by the city council unless the subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, please come to the podium, give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time and any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. This is your opportunity to address the council, but the council is not able to respond or engage in dialogue. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda? Okay, we'll move on to Agenda Item 46. Okay. Councilmember recognition, comments made by individual city council members during this portion of the agenda will not be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. Councilman Coffin, anything?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just one point. In reading today's Review Journal, I noticed that what appears, a story has appeared that says we, we so-called missed the boat on getting in a bid for a Major League Soccer team. And I do not know if the story is accurate, but it does say that essentially, and it reminds us that we did vote for $80,000 to consider creating a proposal for this. If in fact it is $80,000 we have not spent, but rather simply appropriated, I would very much hope that we can hold on to that money until we know if in fact there won't be another chance. But the story says five years, and that the two, those teams that submitted by a deadline, 3:00 p.m. yesterday, those towns are the only ones that will get an MLS team. If that's, if that's the case, then obviously, you know, we should consider doing something about it. It may or may not be agenda, but under this item of business, Your Honor, it seems to me we could ask the city manager for an explanation.
Thank you. I would ask them, Ms. Fretwell, if in fact there's any validity to the report that was in the newspaper, and where we stand, are we five years out then from being a viable contender for a franchise?
Mayor, we, at your council meeting in January, we did contract with David Abrams and Inner Circle Sports. And what we will do in light of this report is evaluate if there was some change in the MLS process that we were unaware of as far as the door being shut to us applying in the next five years. And if so, we'll bring back a recommendation to you in that regard.
Thank you very much. And I do highly recommend to just make sure that whoever reported that is accurate in their information, which we know sometimes, not the fact. Thank you. Anything else, Councilman?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Councilwoman?
The Ward 1 office is hosting a meeting of McNeil residents to go over traffic problems and suggestions in that area on February 22nd at the Wauston Elementary School at 6 o'clock p.m. And that's the major meeting we're holding ourselves, but we wanted to pass along additional information for people that may not be aware of the wonderful variety of events that take place regularly at the Charleston Heights Arts Center, which is located in Ward, at Ward 1. Well, it's one word also. In the Utah Shakespeare Festival on Saturday, February 4th at 2:00 p.m., the festival will be performing a condensed touring version of A Midsummer Night's Dream with complete costumes set since theatrical lighting. The play is a fantasy of folklore and fairies, a medley of poetry, song and dance, and a shortened version of the play is available if you wish. And if you're interested in getting tickets, call 702-229-3514, or 702-229-6383. And then on February 11th at 7:00 p.m., there is a performance of Love Me or Leave Me, Letters of Longing, Loving and Leaving. That sounds like our era, Mayor. Whoops, she missed our era.
Sounds like radar.
Yeah, it sounds like, it sounds like radar, anyway. I think it might be good. I might go see all those real letters by real people, including Mark Twain, Frida Kahlo, and George Carlin. They offer a poignant look at the true meaning and nature of love. So for more, more information on tickets, call 702-229-6383. And then on Saturday, February 18th at 2:00 p.m., we'll have the Brass Roots Quintet deliver a free concert experience with a wide-ranging repertoire that embraces both the classical and contemporary styles of music. So that Brass Roots Quintet concert, which is free, you can get more information by calling 702-229-6383. And lastly, on Saturday, February 25th at 2:00 p.m., the Charleston Heights Arts Center is hosting a free Story Slam. A Story Slam is a celebration of words and experiences that shape and define who we are. Members of the Las Vegas community are invited to share their own seven-minute personal genuine story connected to the theme of Close Calls, and they will be shared with an audience who will also give their donations for that information. And if you're interested in that, call 229-6383. I wanted to cover these. I don't think enough information is available at what we offer as far as entertainment, as far as education at the Brush Center, and it goes on throughout the year, and it's going to be contemporary, it can be Shakespeare, it can be a brass band, it could be bluegrass music. And all these performances take place in Ward 1 at the Charleston Heights Arts Center near Charleston Indicator at 800 South Brush Street. And I just hope that those who are listening and watching this will take the opportunity to attend most or more of these events. I know I've attended two or three, and they're absolutely excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Beers?
Thank you, Your Honor. We will be hosting Coffee with Councilman Friday morning. That will be February 3rd, just two days hence, 7:30 to 9:00 in the morning. Desert Wind Coffee Roasters is in the northeast corner of Sahara and Buffalo, kind of tucked behind the U.S. Gas Station there. Hope to see some neighborhood residents come out and let us know how the city's doing. Then we'll be doing Beers with Beers at the bar Thursday, February 16th, 2017, 5:30 to 7:30 in the evening. That is in the Village Shopping Center, Village Square Shop, now, what do you call it, Village Circle Shopping Center with the Albertsons in it, used to be the Haggens, used to be the Smiths, 1916 Village Center Circle. Hope to see folks there. If you do have some business to transact with the city, say a permit for a water heater or something like that, we have the business kiosk in place and functioning up at the Sahara West Library. That may be more convenient for you. You can stop there and do any basic transactions that you would normally have to come down to the Development Services Center to do. And so be sure to take advantage of that remote location. It was 53 years ago today in music history, February 1st, 1964, that the governor of Indiana declared the song Louie Louie by the Kingsmen pornographic, and he requested that the state's radio stations not play the song. I've listened to Louie Louie, and I don't know what the hell those lyrics are trying to say. I don't know how you come to the conclusion that they're pornographic. But any rate, that was 53 years ago today. My, how times have changed when it comes to pornography in our music, I guess. Anyway, that's...
That's fascinating. I remember Louie Louie.
Yeah, might have been the, might have been the start of the world's longest FBI investigation. I'm not sure. Those Kingsmen. Anyway, that's all we have, Your Honor, in Ward 2. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. And our wonderful Mr. Steph Rosanthony, please.
Thank you, Mayor. On behalf of the mayor and the entire city council, I want to send our condolences to the family of David Steinman. David passed away over the weekend, and we all knew him up here. He was a good friend. He was on the planning commission for many years. He served on the city council representing Ward 4. I just recently appointed him, just two weeks ago, back to the planning commission. He's an integral part of Sun City Summerlin. He's been the president of that community for many years. for many years, uh, was instrumental in, uh, building Fire Station 107, and, uh, it was sad news to hear that he passed away over the weekend, um, I spoke to the family, I know the mayor did, and, uh, uh, we're just gonna miss him, he's, uh, he was a, just a great man and a, and a great friend, and really a, a, a big part of the Las Vegas community and the Sun City Summerlin, so, um, just want the family to know, and the Sun City commuter to know that we're thinking about them, and David Steinman, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Anthony, for doing that, does, Councilman Steinman was, was a good man. Well, um, I wanna reach, I wanna express my appreciation to the American Red Cross and Christine Kramer in my office for manning the Centennial Hills Community Center during the voluntary evacuation of Lee Canyon and Kyle Canyon due to the avalanches last week. Um, I have been a couple of times and didn't see any avalanches, but, uh, I wanna express my appreciation for letting them help me, actually, Christine and I actually helped them, helped them move some boxes with the youth council, we had a youth council meeting out there, uh, one night. Um, upcoming event, uh, we have a free paper shredding event coming up Saturday, April 8th, 10 AM to 2, or 12, at the Centennial Hills Community Center, right off, uh, right behind the Centennial Hills, um, uh, between the Centennial Hills Community Center and the library out there, so I've been putting that out there now, cause people have been asking when we're having our next event, so that's why it's, it's there, and I wanna express my appreciation also to Nevada Childseekers, uh, my wife sits on their board, and I had an opportunity to, uh, go to one of their board meetings last week, and they did a phenomenal, they're doing a phenomenal job reaching out to children, not only locating children, but teaching in our schools about the issues going on with bullying and all sorts of other things, so they're doing a great, great service to our community, it's great to partner with them, unfortunately, we do have a missing young lady, named Frida Torrentino Rico, she's 16 years old, five foot, 860 pounds, uh, last contact was January 16th, and seen around Twain and Wynne Road, she does wear glasses, and so if anybody knows the whereabouts of this young lady, let's get her where she can be cared for properly, first contact, Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department, 702-828-3111, or Nevada Childseekers, 702-458-7009. And if you need to reach me, it's easy to do, there's our new City of Las Vegas logo, um, easy to find, councilman-s-ross@lasvegasnevada.gov, I'm on Twitter, I'm on Facebook, or you can do the old-fashioned way, and call me at 702-229-6154. Mayor, Council, thank you very much.
Thank you, um, and, on Wednesday, no, it's not, it can't be Wednesday, day's the first, oh, it is Wednesday, Wednesday, February 8th, at Sam Boyd Stadium, the national teams of Iceland and Mexico are gonna be facing off for a national soccer match, and so please come on down, it's at 8:30 PM to experience the fun and excitement of professional soccer. Thursday, uh, February 9th, we'll celebrate the five-year anniversary of our fabulous Mob Museum, so join us at 5:00 PM as we toast the 13th most popular museum in the United States. We're also, it moved up six, just in the report from State of the City, but it is one of the most popular museums in the country, and we're so proud of, of what it has been purported to, um, to be telling everybody, and yet, last night, and I understand that Ms. Fretwell and some others from the Mob Museum did an excellent job at the library on East, um, East Flamingo, um, telling everybody about the Mob Museum, how it was created and how well it was curated, and the money was so carefully done, great job, I heard you did a great job. And then, February 18th through the 20th, come see our future professional soccer stars compete in the Mayor's Cup, um, with thousands of competitors, I think this year we have, we had, and I'm sure it's grown, 566 teams signed up, from 12 different foreign countries and 27 states, um, so that will be at all of our Las Vegas fields, and it's really quite an undertaking, we're just excited. And our next city council meeting will be, uh, here, February 15th at 9:00 AM, and so wanna thank everybody, and, uh, feel just, yeah, we've had quite a few losses in, in our community over the past, uh, week and a half, and so our, our condolences, sympathy and prayers to, um, families and loved ones, this is just a very, very difficult time, and so, the Steinman certainly, because he was so excited, I had spoken with him to be back on planning, and, uh, just really it meant so much, as so many others.
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to say on that, I remember that it was two weeks ago today, that he stayed throughout the entire meeting, just tell us how excited he was at the end of the meeting and how pleased he was, and I'm so thankful that Councilman gave him that opportunity to be on the planning committee again, uh, Stavros, because, uh, it brought so much happiness to him, so at least he had, he had that happy feeling within him.
So, thank you all, and we will see you on the 15th at 9 o'clock, and staff, technology, everybody that keeps us all working, those who are patient enough to sit through us, thank you, and thank you at home.